Omgeving dis kip vir nieve tuutreders do die heisbouwbedrijf, die re instelling van contractuele bepalings, wat of vol houbaarheid in die mark verseerker.
The bill further seeks to align and create synergy with other relevant pieces of legislation such as the Public Finance Management Act of 1999 and the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000.
Kape, molau, thomo onu o o tjaal la pe lochobatla, ho ho re ho nele tsa ma isano, mo ho lochot sa matirisano, mo ho ya di karro lo se dingwe tsa molau, se ri ja ga molau wata elo, ya makoli asa cha ba, wan kawa 1999, le molau watu le tso ya bu siya misi joo tsa ma iso ya 2000.
Die Wetsontwerp is voorts van doelen om ander terschatelijke stikke wetsing, so sie weet op openbare financiële bestier van 1999/90 en die weet op die bevordering van administratieve gerechtigheid weet noe van 2000, en wordie instemming te bring en synergie mee te skip.
And the 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 summary of the provisions of the bill as follows: Chapter one of the bill deals with the definition, application of the Act and the application of the Public Finance Management Act to the council.
Meja non so voka anyo, ya molau thomo onu waruna ekamokha olatela, kaolo wan ya molau thomo onu, i amanafanofa li di ka loso, eh tirahato ya molau, li tirahato ya molau watsa ma iso ya makoli asa cha ba, a kansele.
Die opsuming van die bepalings van die Wetsontwerp is as vol: webstik ien van die Wetsontwerp handle wordie omskrijven, de passing van die wet en de passing van die wet op openbare financiële bestier op die raad.
The bill makes provision for inter alia the definition of the bill to expand the protection afforded housing consumers by including repairs, renovations, alterations and additions to an existing home under the council regulatory regime.
Me molau thomo onu o kape, harre kha zedi wey, o tja losa le foko aha, ho re le tchaniso ho atulusiwa, male banali chirele tso ya loné, e ya ho neya, bani bamomatung chirele tso, mesene se si di ruaka ho tze ngelitza, di we tze di tchanali di baka anyo zantu, ho ncha fa di wa ha yo ne, di petlo tze di di ruak mo ho yo ne, ho za di tala le tso tze di di ruak mo ho yo ne, e len se si di ruanjana ho tsa ma isana le bo lau di diwa kansele.
Die Wetsontwerp maak voorziening vir onder meer die omskriving van bou, om die beskerming wat aan beheisingsverbrekers gebied word, uit te breid die re herstalwerk, opknappings, veranderingen en aanbouings aan een bestaande heis, krachtensiratsregulerende staalsels, in dis slide.
The scope of the application of the legislation is extended to include not only the builders who undertake home building as a business but also owners builders. Owners builders are included in the definition of a home builder and are required to register with the council.
Se resse bo na kape kio hori tirahato ya molau onu o, e oke di tso ho re ete e akare tse, le batu ba esim ba achifela, ba ho we ba diranti ro ya ho aha matro ja ga khue bo ya bo ne, me kape, ho di ruak hori, le batu ba ba ahang di njo tsa bo ne kabo bo ne, ba tchaniso ho re ba akare duemoo, so ben ba achibao, ba tze ngelitzo mo tja loso ya le foko le lering moa ha nnto, i bile ba taka hori le bo ne ba i kuadi se ko kansele.
Die petupassingsgebied van die wetsing word uitgebreid, om nie net bouers in dis slide, maar die bou van die heis is een bezigheid onderneem nie, maar ook eiënnaarbouwers. Eiënnaarbouwers word per die omskriving van een heisbouwer ingesluit en moet per die raad registreer.
Chapter two of the bill seeks to provide for the continuation of the council established in terms of section two of the Act as a juristric person to be known as National Home Builders Building Regulatory Council, and further seeks to provide for the objectives of the council, governance and structure of the council.
Me kaolo tu yo ne ya molau thomo onu o, i batla ho tja male afanofaka, kanya ho tso wele di se tsa, kansele bile, e kromi loho ya gakarolo tu ya molau, e loho re etakho na ho tjaal la bile, le hori, le rau le lering motoa simolau, lisimole hui sihui ja ga, eh molau diwa bo se cha ba, wa ka ho ya maklo, ho za molau diwa kansele ya bo se cha ba, wa ka ho ya maklo.
Webstik twee van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om voorziening te maak voor die voorsetting van die raad, ingestal en gevolke artikel twee van die wet, as een rechtspersoon wat as die nationale heisbouwerregulatie raad bekend staan. Dit het voorstind doel om voorziening te maak voor die oegmarke bestier en struktiër van die raad.
Chapter three of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of the home builders and developers, the establishment of the register of the of home builders, the requirements for registration, the suspension of the registration, the grading of home builders and liabilities of unregistered home builder or developer.
Harleba kaolo three ya molau thomo onu o yo ne, e batla hori, ho tja melua katula kanya ya, ho kuadi siwa ha ba achiba maklo, mo ho le batu ba ba regandita, ho re ba aha maklo, mo ho tso ne, le ho tjuwa ha register ya hui kuadi sa, le ho di ruak hori, batu balatellele di batla falo, sa hui kuadi sa, ho za le len ho tusiwa ha ba, tu ba ba kilen ba ba kuadi si, zu mona goen efiti ling, ma emo aba achiba maklo loné, a e lo tchoko ho re bamoma emo anzijanj, e len ba achiba maklo ho za bo ne ba tami ba ba kajuan basa i kuadi sa.
Webstik drie van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om voorziening te maak voor registratie van heisbouwers in undwakelaar, die instelling van een register van heisbouwers, die vereisteisverregistratie, opskoording van registratie, gradieren van heisbouwers in ansprekelheid van een ongerегистeerde heisbouwer of undwakelaar.
Chapter four of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of the register of the enrollment, the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by the home builder, consequences for failure to enroll a home, duties in respect of subsidy housing project and the consequence of the failure by a member of the executive council or member of mayoral committee responsible for human settlement, a social housing institution or a subsidy housing delivery agent to comply with the provision of the Act.
Be kaolo four yo ne ya molau thomo onu, e batla ho re ho tje mwe register ya hui kuadi sa, ho bo ho ne li di tama ra ho za ho re tele la ha batu ba e len ho re ha ba i kuadi se tsa, maklo bile asimola ho achiwaa, eh kemo achiwantoo, mo ho li di tiro, se e lo ho re ho le tsi tuso ya projeke ya maklo, li di tama ra ho za ho re tele la ha le lo ko la kansele, eh la ku di tamaha, ho za le lo ko la komidiya me yara, yo re len ma i karebe lo a maklo, ho za se teo saloa, ho sa maklo ho za, mu di re wa tebo lo ya ho aha maklo, ho ba me la di taino, tsa molau o kromi wey.
Webstik vier van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om voorziening te maak voor die instelling van een register van inskravings, die inskravingsvereis voor die anfang van die bouder van die re heisbouwer, gevolke voor die verschrijming om heis in te schrijf, plichte ten opstichte van een subsidiebeheisingsproiek in die gevolke van verschrijming die re lid van die uitvoerende raad of een lid van die burgemeesterskomiteer verantwoordelijk voor menselijke nederzettings, een maatskapelijke beheisingsinstelling of een subsidiebeheisingsafleveringsagent om aan die bepaling van die wet te voldoen.
Chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty funds, additional funding through man is appropriated by parliament as the council regulatory mandate is a public function, the establishment of non-profit company, management of funds, the fees of the council, commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and minimum amount payable from the warranty funds, claims and limitations.
En then kaolo ya bu tja le ya molau thomo ya molau onu o, e batla ho tja malega makoli a kansele, le tjo le la maklo la ni te fale tso, makoli a tala le tso, gamadi a tso tso engi parlemente ja ga, e le taulelo ya taulo ya kansele, e li tiro ya se cha ba, ho tje mua ka di campani, tze di sa di remoroko tso, ho za taulo ya maklo li di duelo sa kansele, ho simolu la le se baga sa ni te fale tso, eh troa troa e gua ho dimu, le e gua tsa se e duelo, ho za ho le tjo le la ni te fale tso, di topo mo ho li di le ganyetso.
Webstik vijf van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om voorziening te maak voor die fonds van die raad, die heiswarburgfonds, beikumene bevondsing, die re goud dat die parlement behellig hoed, angesehen die ratsregulerende mandat, een openbare functie is, die stichting van een nieuwansgevende maatschappij, bestier van fonds, die goud van die raad, anfang in die re van die warburg, die maximum en minimum bedrag betalbaar aan die warburgfonds, eise en beperking.
Chapter six of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of the services to build a home which form part of the subsidy housing project, project, from a home builder who is not registered with the council relies on a on a home that was not enrolled with the council in his tender submission, who previously failed to rectify or complete the ratification of structural defect as directed as directed by the council without a reasonable grounds or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlement.
Kaolo ya bu six yo ne ya molau thomo onu o, e batla ho tibe la eh tsingelo ya di tiro ta ho aha maklo, e len ho re di karro ya projeke ya tuso ya maklo a ho aha, ho za ho moa hiwa maklo, yo sa i kuadi sa ngo kansele, ai ga ya ha fela kantlo, e ne e sa kuadi siwa le kansele, fa ane arobe la tendera ya ha hwe, yo mona goen efiti ling, ho we apale tso engi ho baka ya, ho za ho feza baka anyo ya di poso zantu, e tze indine ndili tengmo ho yo, ja ga ho laitso ya kansele, ho re ho di ruajalo, me asa di ruajalo kwan tja ha le baka, ho za e le mo tye yo re tele tso engi ho tja si sa tsi rimosotso, le we e tjausi tso engi tona ya maklo.
Webstik zes van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om die verkrijging van die dienste van een heisbouwer, wat nie per die raad registreer is nie, te verbied om een heis te bou, wat deel voor hem van een subsidiebeheisingsproiek, wat staat maak op een heis wat nie per die raad ingeschrijf was, in say tender voorlaging nie, wat voor die verschrijmeed om die reagstelling van structurele fouten, soos die re raad gelaas, zonder reële groene rechten stal of te fotoe, of wat verschrijmeed om enige inrichting bekend te maak wat die minister van menselijke nederzettings voorgeschriffe is.
And chapter seven of the bill seeks to provide for the enforcement of the provision of the bill once enacted, it also seeks to to provide for the appointment and the duties of inspectors, the establishment and the powers of the compliance and enforcement committees, matters relating to administrative and substantive non-compliance and penalties relating there to... The chapter further seeks to provide alternative dispute resolution, criminal offence and sanctions.
Kaolo ya bu seven ya molau thomo onu yo ne, e batla ho tja maleka di tirahato ya di tja melo tsa molau thomo, fa eh fela fa o se zu efiti si tso, kape e batla ho tja maleka ho tatiwa, li di tiro ta ba tja kubi, eh ho tje mua ka di tata ta komidiya ko ba me lo li tirahato, di nja zedi amanangletza ma iso le mo tewa, ho za obamele eh di di le mo ho li di ko tja, zedi amanangleyo ne, kaolo kape e tso le la ho batla ho tja maleka, di tse la zedi dingwe za tara bololo ya, ho chang, di ko lo molau za bu si ni, mo ho li di tyle tso.
Webstik zeven van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om voorziening te maak voor die aftuwing van die bepalings van die Wetsontwerp, so draadit voor orden is. Dit werk tiend doel om voorziening te maak voor die anstelling en plichte van inspecteer, die stichting en befoog die re van die nakwommings- en handhavingskomiteer, angeleente angelehend die re wat verbandhau met administratieve en wesentelijke nie nakwoming en strafmaatreels wat e dom je verbandhau, die webstik eet vaardert in doel om voorziening te maak voor alternatieve geskoolbeslachting, criminele overtredings en sanctions.
The chapter eight of the bill seeks to provide for the various matters including the home building home building manual, the making of the rules by the council and of the regulation by the minister, the recovery of the fees, vicarious liabilities, eh the personal liability of the members, directors, trustees of the home builders, the duties of the estate agency, financial institution, conveniences, the code of conduct of the council members, home builders, developers and other industrial players, this chapter also deals with transitional matters.
Kaolo ya bu eiti yo ne ya molau thomo, e batla ho tja maleka di nja zedi farlo kane, tze di tze ngelitza kai edi ya ho aha maklo, ho di ruak me la o ki kansele, le me la o ka tona, ho bo na di duelo, ma i karebe lo a mo tye yo mo wey, ma i karebe lo a moa ma lo ko, ba kai edi, ba tchoko mi di ba baki ba maklo, ba tja kisi, mo ho li di tiro za ba rekisi ba maklo, di teo za di chele te, ba buele di, eh di koodu sa ma i tso la ama lo ko a kansele, ba achiba maklo, ba tja kisi mo ho le ba za karlo ba ba wey, ba industrieno.
Webstik acht van die Wetsontwerp het in doel om voorziening te maak voor verskeia angelehend die re, in sluiten die heisbouwhandleiding, die maak van reels die re die raad en van regulaties die minister, die verhal van goud, plaatsvervangende ansprekelheid, die persoonlijke ansprekelheid van die leden, directiere, trasties van een heisbouwer, plichte van eindomsagenten, financiële installings, actebesorgers, die gedragskode voor raad die re, heisbouwers undwakelaar en andere rolspelers in die bedrijf. Die webstik handle werk voor urgangsangelehend die re.
On economic employment and infrastructure development, as noted above, the bill seeks to provide for warranty funds surplus to be utilized towards transformative human settlements developmental programs which facilitate growth skills development and economic transformation in the home building industry.
Harre tamo kanya ya ekonomi tiro, le tja bololo ya ma fara tja tja, di nja sa tendi me di uyo afanofaka hori, ja ga ho se zu ho bo le tso fa ho dimu, molau thomo onu obatla ho tja malega, gamadi a seteng ale tjo le la ni te fale tso, ho ra adiri se tso e mananewa, a tja bololo ya maklo, a bo tchoko, a w akhonsang, ho re ho ne le kulo, eh tja bololo ya bu koni, le petlo ya ekonomi mo industri ya ho aha maklo.
Asosna bij de economische indienstning met infrastrukturontwikkeling, so sie bo geneem he die wetsontwerking doel om voorziening te maak, wordie warburgfonds oerskolt angewend word voor heerskeppene menselijke nederzetningontwikkelingsprogramme, wat groei, vaardigheidsontwikkeling en economische ontvorming in die heisbouwbedrijf behaartag.
The bill seeks to provide for imaging home builders greater access and the protection through equitable registration requirements, a grading system, the regulation of certain contractual matters and the continuous continuous development and training. The proposed provision covering the contractual matters between the home builders, developers, employers are meant to contribute towards sustainability of... towards sustainability of imaging home builders and the growth of the home building industry.
Molautomo onu obata kohnela na ka pichelolo li chirele zuingi, e kolo koba aki ba matu, baba simulula an kochachelela. Eh, ka di tchoke koe zedi leka leka na ngza guadi iso, za zamiso ya kochao la. Tauleo ya di incha zedi rileza kontraka, le tchabolo lo, mo koli ka tiso zedi duelela. Di kamele zedi chitshin zuingi zedi tsingeleza ngdi incha za kontraka, maharenha ba aki ba matu, ba tchakisi, le ba tabi eh, di diroha kore. Bannelessa ya besatuelo lo pele ya ba aki ba matu, baba tchachelela, mo koli akholo ya industriya kua aha matu.
The Wetzontvarpetin doo, um an obkommende housebauer greater togang and beskerming te biet der merow van belike registrati vereist is, a graderingstalsol, the regulating of secure contractual angelehndere and the openontwikkeling and opleiding. The vorgesalte befallings where the contractual angelehndere to the housebauer and vikelash in vargeverstak. It's be doo um beiter dra through the full hauberight of obkommende housebauer in the grew of the housebauer bedrave.
Kaburipana kiona, really lowe samarize at this bill.
So in short, that is the summary of the bill.
Here is courtlyx, the upsumming for the Wetzontvar.
We are now going to open the floor for those that wants to make input into the bill.
Ka ja lo, retele koe, lo nasheba ka ja no ba kai zuza, kora baba batalhonsa di troyalo ka molautomo onu, ba di rejalo.
Us genau die flure opmak for the gene that insavoleber o'er the Wetzontvar.
I've got, um, te, chairs on, on the middle road. So people who wants to speak can raise their hands and be identified. And then they'll have to come to those, um, chairs and will then give them, them the opportunity to make inputs on the bill.
Renali di duelo mo boharem ba kaukaua ya ro na, ba tchobaba batalhonsa kubua ba ka tcholeza ma zo, ba ta supiwa, me haba sinaku supiwa. Ba le, ba le kona mo di duelo nzeo, elo kora ba bo ne sa bakaseo sa konsa di troyalo za bo ne ka molautomo.
Um, we have Mr. C Jacobs from the traditional leaders who wanted to speak, who are going to give them the opportunity. They will decide whether they want to start or they'll speak later on. We'll hear from them.
Yo. Ba eh, se to ba ilo kora banalorona fanu fa ba ilo kora basata na ba kilo koba tla kubua. Ka to da tla banas bakasa kora ba buwe ekatwa elo kone ja no, kosa na kongomorako nyana fa ba utwa basate basia me to kaba buwa.
Us is menier shee ya Jacobs, so fine the traditional layers, ale kanki so fele yers tevo proth and o fele la da anvo proth, ma is welkom and la gaan i ni raiganset om te proth.
Can I then identify hands that wanted to speak? I've seen the hands of the done number one, number, number one, number two, number three. Yeah, where is it? Is this lit? Number one, number two, number three, number four, number four. Can we have other hands? We need ten hands. Number five. Number six. Um. All of you, you are fine with the bill. The other hands is there. Number seven, number eight, number nine and ten. Number nine and the last hands. The last hea, the last hands. What does that mean? Are we fine with the bill? Or you want to hear others what they say and then you raise hands? No, it doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. Can we have number ten? I close. Do I close? Can we have number ten? These are the only people who wants to speak. Okay, number, the last, the last hands. Thank you very much, ma. Um, do we have any people who are physically challenged? Our disability community amongst us?
Us enige personen met gestremdere, iemand in the gemeenschap wa da eh, gestremdite it, of hope neederage it?
Aranale ba loeti, kosa ba kodi, baba tla, ba batalhonsa ela, me basa kono kosa maya.
No, I don't see any hands. Um, I'm going to give, um, the first person to make inputs. Um, you have three minutes to make your inputs. Um, if there are those that have a written submission, you're welcome to submit your written submission to the table here, um, on my right hand side.
Ba kai zu, kibona ma zo ho asa, asa yeme jaloo, onale, osantse anale troyalo, me di troyalo zedi guadi len. Na leva di ra mo kolen na fata fele mfa le la kanala, isha di troyalo talo na koko bo.
Dame seniere, as i enache geschreven, eh, in dienste wa make, is welkom om depe unerschieningspausenjel op uns rechterkante make, danke.
Um, as you speak, you give us your name and then you indicate whether you support the bill or you reject the bill.
Ba kai zu, kiko pa yalo kapeka troya troya kora kaukaua, so san tla koe ikitisi, or nele na la kahwo, lo kora auduma la na le molauteo, oriklenka lo kumpio, kosa oka na na lo ne la.
If they are councillors, they are welcome to make their input too because they all be the ones that are managing this legislation.
Dame seniere, wanier i, i, in dienste wa make of is break, beert an break and da was be from for us enorm denume in of i here the Wetzontvar understehen in of i de dienste. Us here urgeliendet an ratslera wa in dienste wa make om urgde te den, danke.
Yes, number one, um, yeah, recognized.
One, ka, agatsa la bile.
And yeah. Mathisa, kunkwa. Goyemore, sanbonani. I will grah mani regeliendet gebrik mak on the portefiele commeteer van menschlike nederzetting's grew, the foresitter is gegroot. Now, us is here om the JTG, traditional koi san ice to vertedag, verteenwardag and the JTG district. Now, in sah di biyinkons bae gewoon, barela for us geen daket, where we're to gaan. I will for the parliament, bye, danki se. Allet us besook in Olivanhoek by the koi san traditional ice and for us the voerlegging gege round om the Wetzontvar. Now, the JTG, traditional koi san ice, ah, us as the traditional koi san ice understehen the wetz, Wetzontvar op die beskerming van byeysings verbrekers. Want for welkom die wetz, dit is goed for the verbrekers and goe nies, that andersworte bouwerk ook angesreid kan word. Angesien meer mensen in the algemeen o'er die anduiding verbeterings, o'er verbeterings kla. Us as the JTG, traditional koi san ice, wel grah an our gemeenschappen ook here i a Wetzontvar gaan voorou. Now, ek wel grah vandaag a tlemle op die verkraging van contractuele angelehndere met betrekking to the bouw van ice. Point number one, tender bedrag. Now, bei kere de gebeerde zo, dat da kom, eh, icee it, subsidy icee it, de krei die hoofdcontracteer, die tender. En dan word die tender verkoopt. Politieke inmening, raatslera is bei keer betrok en sylke gefale, waar die tender uitgegeb word. Die tender is misskien tien miljoen rand. Dan moet die, die hoofdcontracteer wa die tender krei, dan moet hij ver die politiek, politiekis a twee miljoen rand ge. En da vanaf moet hij met de acht miljoen rand moet hij die ice gaan bouw. Dit is die basic kern waar ons sams die probleme krei. Vanom moet hij die ice gaan bouw met de acht miljoen, ma da is begroot voor de tien miljoen rand. Dan kan hij die ice kla make i of hulle met die ice op zwak gauw te bouw. En na here eh, eh, dingen moet gekijk word. En da met die sapcontracteer, da met hij, da sap hij weer onder die enity over die NHPRC en zo verschwakt die bouwbedrave. En die ice is nooit op standaard nee. Am twintig elf het een zwag gefal gehad in Olivanhoek, wa da reeze gebouw was, wa is nooit kon kla gebouw was nee, omdat die funds are kla geraak het. Now, ek wel grah he, the portefiele commeteer in the parliament moet kijk na here dingen, van dan verschwakt die standaarden van die ice. Da is bei ansait us gelebe op here the Wetzontvar, ma ek wel vandaag staan op here dingen, van dit ba die, die bron van komer is van de die tender van die ice beginne, van de die tender ge verkoopt word. En eh, die andere gefal van die NHPRC, wat is ook opgeletet in the anwo van i, van, van here dingen is dat bei van die NHPRC het nie eens eh, eh, wette gehe, het is certificate, maar si certificate is ook gekoopt. Hij het om die geld betal om die certificate krei. En dan kan hij die werk doen volgens die standaarden waar het moet gedoen word nee, omdat die certificate gekoopt was. Van die vereist is vandaag, eh, NHPRC, het bei, het bei eh, dingen, van die grond moet gaan, opper vlak moet gaan gekijk word in bei dingen, maar omdat die, die, die stand, omdat hij die certificate gekoopt het, kan hij die standaard die bouw, ice bouw nee. Als zo, ek wel grah he, hier hulle moet na al here dingen kijk. En da wil ik een ander punt ook leg, omdat die human settlements vandaag hi so is. Eh, ik is een military veteran ook eh, in Olivanhoek. In dertig maand, twintig zeventen, hij die minister van human settlements, minister Linduwe Sissulu, eh, brief geschreven naar die minister paletik om vijf ice te bouw voor military veteranen. En tot nou toe, het is nie die ice ge krei nee. Us het al veel keer briefe geschreven naar die provincial eh, human settlements toe, maar het net die acheslaat op ons nee. Zo, us as the JTG, traditional ice, ons understehen here the Wetzontvar, wat vandaag hier vorgewoos, bye danki, kela boi, koi san erde.
Thank you.
Good day, thank you. I greet you in my native language and I greet you in all the others as well. I am a representative of the JTG group for the district and I would like to thank parliament for also coming to visit us in Olivanhoek to present the induction and training to us on this ball. We as the JTG do support this ball and it, to us, it is very good news that more people can be assisted. But I would like to also, I'm going to propose this ball to my community as well. Um, and however, I just want to bring one or two items to your attention when it comes to contractual opportunities for the building of a house. The first point is fraud. I'm sure you are aware of it. Fraud and corruption. It is often the case that a subsidy would be issued to build a house. A contract would be eh, or a tender would be awarded to a main contractor for the value of say ten million rand. However, this main contractor will then pay two million rand to a politician who ensured that he got the tender. Now, this contractor is only left with eight million rand to complete a project. It leads to shoddy building work. It leads to, um, the quality not being up to standard according to what the NHPRC requires. This has a snowball effect where it now becomes the problem of the subcontractors to try and complete the project with even less money and eventually the project does not end up being completed. So also another issue is certificates for the NHPRC that are not obtained legitimately. They are purchased and so the person who has purchased these certificates is not actually able to build the house according to the standards and regulations that is required. So leading to very shoddy building work and things not being safe. Lastly, I would like to bring to your attention that I am a military veteran. And in twenty seventeen, Minister Linduwe Sissulu wrote a letter to the municipality for houses to be built for military veterans. We have still not received those houses. The, we have sent letters to various munis, to, to the municipality and the department, yet nothing has been done. Despite this, we do as the JTG group support this ball and thank you for bringing it to us.
Dumalang kape ba kai zu, so kolo bo kolo yang parlamente. Ndelele kore kilu dumedisa, mo lele melakamme, matasinla kumpio no. Um, arko bukane jaloo for JTG, renare le ba koi san, rebo ka parlamente, kore bifiti le. Redumalana le molauteo, refano kauta kudumalana tata yalo le molauteo, otis zuingi parlamente, matasinla kumpio no. Fela kore jaloo, ro na, arle ma koi san, renali, selo, kosa, zona ditlelebo, sa ba batalhonsa difiti sa mo parlamente, matasinla kumpio no. San tla, sesetuinzing mo ba kyiin, or sesetuinzing ro na tata ma koi san, kibokolo koele bobotzenen mo se chaben sa ro na, se kolo, se kolo, se kolo bo kolo yalo ma ba ka otsanale bu di tendara, li, li subsidy. Mo kongwe, kore mweni afiti le tendara, kosa yoné subsidy, otsanale ko pata la ma di a duran, eh, kore, eh, pata le yalo ba, 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 ba za se politiki, kuvitela tendara. Za se ka hi, kore mo toha filen ma di aleka na ka ten miljon. Eh, kore aba fele za se seka eight miljon, kofelele za tendara. Se o si si ti sa yalo ma ba ka. Si si ti sa yalo ma ba ka, kore. Moa koeza, oh, du den lechonu ya kora tendara. Afelele za moa koe, kosa yoné chonu a krei len, ai filen tota kora afelele za tendara. Kori leu di diinzi, tota zedi zuinzing, sawa berigi kanyaya certificate, kosa ona matuli. Ah, a, a, a tchokan kore moa kyi tchot, ah, kore a kere tendara, zuinzing afiti le, kaware, kamo we, asana certificate, kosa ona matula zuinzing, kaka, a, 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 a fiu a chonu ya kora, a fu ma nee, tendara e o. Keho pala yalo, ah, kawa kawa twenty seventeen, kha ministera, wa, ah, the military veterans, kosa bole, baba berigezing si sole, baba tu le mo si sole mweni, kere, kere bifiti len. Or se bis za jaloo, Or sesetwinzen jalo, ma tro, apuso, ma rufitella, le kampi, no, hori zeri fitelle. Se ministera, asbulen ka, wa, wa, twenty seventeen, kiala bo.
Eh, kera ta, hota, menya, tloho boi ki du medisa parlamente, libi solami ki wui choko moncho. Ki tjuakoka, tu kuhamahara. Eh, ki atendile, eh, it's a program. En itile, itla, hori laleta, this session. Takayeka, buhwe, hela wapi lo. Eh, concern na bili, kiae, kiae, amochela. Eh, mare, with condition, I have a reason why, kadi conditions. So the first condition ki isu yaro na ya local government. We have serious problem, eh, ke batla, hori parlamente, eh, into details. Ho le mocha, hori renale, renale ma tata mo our local government. Se, se, zeri karabe la mo chon. For example, li kaya ni housing. Eh, hauka, ta, hori belela, especially tata kuhamahara. Oh, honale motza ro mu nyinyani, o nyatsechlin, tata motpele, mu mrauhamainela, mo tunna. Wa andro American, obi duan, hoti kikumba, iron ore mine. So eh, hauka, ta, kushaba renale, eh, the officials, like starting from municipal manager. Eh, mayor, eh, jalo, jalo, baba linte, baba re representing, even the councillors. Eh, renale, a very serious problem when you come into housing. Because okriyaro kumaspala, eh, employee kumaspala, o owner seven earths. Mu eriyen. And it's a concern to us as communities, hori. Yan, hamo to are, removote la homa, hali to represent us. But hali mo le, oheresa, ena, hori, retokabono, ene, o owner seven stands. Mu eriyen. And aba kadi hostel, dibidimu benefit. Kapé is waiting for government and is getting payment. What about us? Because renale community members, we want place to stay. So ki ne kindre le shebele, even employment. Hauka sheba, the employment, etedi kumaspalo, sheba di senin. Zedi linte moti, wa okriya senimi e one, in different position. So ri, pota hori, ah, adi family, zedi, we, kaka, hori, adi artenaskolo, or what? Because it's a very serious concern, eh, linte, even ku counseling. Eh, kia uka, hori, counseling, sometimes, eh, debili, zedi, we, hadi, kadi need to be signed and everything. So the problem is a counselor from a political party. It, but this thing ya rebola as communities. For example, li, ha counselora tjuakali. Hauka sheba, tova ba hi ri one. The most, mo di luri, etza, mu tla kala and everything. Wa okriya motowa, ah, tjuak from a family, ya ha, a mayor in MM. If his family, kapé, hota, from the ground level. And we tella, ba tjuak kumahayin, kokoa, akuma tjuanki. Ba batla, hori appoint wa, mu du mu rolo, ro, kasa honiana, oro, hamahara. We tella, elohoro, wa hota family, ya ha, hori yotli, ai tnyako kumaspala. Yan, kumaspala is a family house. Recopa, hori, parlamente, eho bona, hori, idiranka, solo, sesitinjalo. Eh, eh, NHRC, like, eh, eh, knowledge, bahay etso. Karé, karé, konuku itelela information, information, ne, karé, konuku itelela ba, ba ro na. Lo zedi, mu zedi, lehaunzu bua, kato ne, di arre, eh, di certificate, sesa housing, rehotlawa, kuwa ma tro. Wa point wa, yang, es ra konraka, hori, o starto, o tle, hori, akamato, and then mrauhamana, kona le madia, kona ngoa tle man. Ay lo, hori, RDP, ya ha, hori, conditioning, eh, right. Problem, ki, hori, information, ne, ha itlamoba, hulung. Hakiti, hori, i, taka zele, ntsinjalo. So honale advantage, yena e dris one. Ya hori, mo kuruma, ne, mo hara, dibuka tony. Re dibonala, dihoka, ku trating, hara, tana skolo, hara baala. So, 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 si chochwa, es an advantage. And ntiwa, ki kopa, hori, lo ne, ebankan we, because itlehu, tisatlaka, nungona kunye, tlamwe, no, hori. Ha kitara, thola, rethala, reyinela. Hauka, tana kuruma, no, we, tana la, tana mo, hori, yo, no, bo sheba economical growth. Yate, you won't believe, hori, we have thirty four mines, operationale, mo kuruma. But bo trokati, ro, bo, na, lebo, ne, mo kuruma, it's very rare. That is why, ki, hori, ntiwa, ya, affect, small businesses, karé, konuku, manufacture la di lo. Retaila, renale, a middleman, mineba, hori, bara, you are a supplier. You're going to buy bread because you can't manufacture in bridge, bread. Then you take it from you and then you supply to the mine. You, you are a middleman, you are not a supplier. So hauka sheba, the procurement, the key position, zedi linte, mo di mining, it's a concern. Hauka, sheba, the engineers, the HRs, big opportunities. Kamoha, eho, ha, hona, opo, kamona, zedi, mo di opportunities, eh. Because of our government, eh, DMR and the local municipality. They kill us by pilema bi, ta, barika tela, mo kuruma. Ka language, ya, hori, hara ruteha. Da eden, yo, ki, batla, hori, starting from today. Government must go and withdraw, ntiwa, from the mind of other provinces. Because hauka, tana, mo kuruma, hauka, ta, kushaba, ki GP, free state, wherever, but whoever drive on the nice cars. But hauka, tana, mo kuruma, ne, mo di mining, di hot. The head of state, di mining, di kuhaute. But this thing, eh, utu sabo, trokuma, haibahayetso. Recopa, hori, let on, ne, di amendment, hotlawa, ka, eh, bill, like that kind of bill. Hori, mo kuruma, ne, honale, ba to, baba tsila, baba nan, le madi, le nam. Baba kona ngoa akanyam, baba nan, leba, nan, leba, sadhi. Baba tontin, baba trokoman. Hela akaba, tu baba we, from out of province, badira. So ki ro na, they affected parties. Ah, hubuaka, the beneficiaries, hubuaka, ro na, because honale, di isu ya locality, kaya ne, rebetsang. Hauka, ku kumba, bo, 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 la ka local, ba hubo lela, ka, ka local, leba, reki, South Africa. We are talking about people who are affected. Abana, ba le, ba blaster, our environment, government can't tell us the truth. Our environment is polluted. We, we are, we are breathing those earths, whatever, somebody di ran kom mining. The chemicals there, we are dying young. Le hauka, tana skolo, wa hubal, osho le muana, because of, lo zedi, di la halamo. Mare, you, you are benefiting nothing. So ntiwa, ya, affect, and it's killing us. Dust monetary, those people, they are monitoring their dust, aba blaster, kudi mining. Mare, we don't know anything about that dust monetarys. Zedi, hori, ba, those people, ba di monetarya, we are breathing those dust. Ha hotolohole, ba to, mo, ro, re experience, ama, tro, mu, me, bilinyaro, na, because of those kind of things. So recopa, hori, government, eho bona, hori, ebereka yang, ka those kind of issues. Eh, wa bona, mo local government, teba, hori, ki kopa, hori, lo, we, tisa ta. Wa bona, mo ma tro, yakaki, tseki, talosa, renale, isu ama hat. Wa bona, hauka, tama, mo le, hatsin larun. Ki le, hatsin, alinyani, mar, hauka, bona, ba to, ba le, ochupailen. Eh, lo, ochupailen, ki ma, horu, rela, keshu, konnahi, bahayetso. Mo, lo, hori, koo, hotrai. Kapí, bile, hauru, udula, mona, renkei, mu toka, naga, narobule, ubua, kaswe, ochoa, ho, kudi mining, onale, madi, litendranta, kaiyo. Ki tleka, texia, mahala, kuanu, li kolui, kaiyo. Yan, ki, batla, hori, lo zedi, wa, government, eh, ho, di sheba, wa bona, le ku counseling. Counseling, ka, zedi, ak, ku counseling, renale, eh, very serious, because, holokua, okriya, party, zedi, we, banal, zedi, mu. At the end of the day, the ruling eh, eh, party are the one, are decision makers. And that thing, ba, zadi, trechu, in the behalf of the community. So the government, the, the government and the local municipality and, and, and the, and the councillors. They are not representing us, they representing their opposition as the employees. So this thing, ki, batla, our government, eh, di re, hori. Bana bawa, ba pachameha, ba pachaminte, because of us. So ba ri, tu se ribere, ke, mama, ki, du lan ten, oh, ki bua ta.
Uh-uh. Oh. Ofedijen, three minutes, wa bawa, itzila la, kamola, karhanua, feza, ka ba ka, ka ofa mu nyetla, mu, because, hey. Now ki, abona, obata, me la, ten minutes.
Oh.
Eh, so ki kopa, horu, fez.
Ki fez ya.
Yeah, because, ki, three minutes. Other things, we can register them there.
Thank you, mother. Ki kopa, hota, tana, mo, zepet, zet, haru, fela, mare, ki, ki, suskuwa, e, e, one. Mare, ki, ki.
I will not allow, renale, seconds to finalize your input.
Alright.
Yes, second, second, yeah.
Okay. Education, ele life, eh, le future. Recopa, hori, government, eh, ho make a show, hori. Kuruma ne is growing and then our economical growth yaro na. Government, ebono, hori, regrowa ya. And ebia, hori, shebele, la isu ya life after mining. After the mining, zedi, sina hotama. Ba ka, ba trokala, kuruma ne, kadi could. Ba re trokala, har, sala, recrea, recrea, ma, no, ti, di, ti, nti, ba sina, ho shoot. Re batla, hori, ba recreate, ele something, mo kuruma ne, for life after mining. Thank you very much, kiala bo.
Thank you, ma, thank you very much.
Greetings, greetings, um, particularly to the dealership of the parliament. My name is Wito Komonto. Um, allow me, chair, to thank you and your committee for granting me this opportunity. Uh, let me start by appreciating the fact that I, I did attend the program. Um, on issues pertaining to, uh, what we are here to discuss today. Firstly, in a polite note, I accept and support the bill. However, I do so in my stand with conditions. The first condition is that, um, I want, or I urge, that the parliament should. Should look into the issue, issues of mines around our area. Particularly the mine here, close to us called Kumiblo Iron Mine. We have miners officials, that are, some of them participating or part of the municipalities. That you find that they own certain or even not portion or third quarter of our stands or hectares. That is jeopardizing an opportunity for us as community members to occupy, to occupy. Um, the fairly available piece of lands for us. Secondly, what bothers me the most is that if you were to look around or make your own research. You'll realize that people that are hired or are employed in the municipality are of the unique serenames. Therefore, I don't understand if this is a good trend that simply because we are not educated or so privileged. Um, as, as the community, that we are not supposed to be offered a fair opportunity. To be employed in the municipality area. Thirdly, um, allow me to also indicate that those people that you see that they are driving expensive or big cars around the area. Those are the people with unique serenames, as I already mentioned before. Um, the fourth point, chairperson, please, is the issue of the, uh, the dust around our area, which comes from the mining. Which is deadly affecting us as the youth. Uh, nobody is caring about how we feel and we are dying as the young generation because of, um, how badly this dust is affecting us. If you give me another opportunity, chair, please, allow me to also emphasize the issue of. The issue of the knowledge and empowerment. Um, I would be pleased if the government or the parliament come forth to empower, uh, the youngsters or we as the committee members. With information, because we are just, uh, of the opinion that. Uh, you are sitting in the leadership to empower people on information, particularly relating to housing. More especially to the elderly, on matters pertaining to, uh, the processes that they're supposed to be following. Um, to claim what is a privilege to them or what is meant for them. In my last note, chairperson. Um, allow me also to indicate that if you give yourself an opportunity to walk around our area. You'll realize that people that are actually occupying our land, uh, they are not of the same skin as us. Uh, most of them are white people and other, uh, cultures or, um, groups. Um, most importantly, in our council, there are some political parties that are taking unfair decisions. Misrepresenting us as commi, community members. And we feel that that misrepresentation of facts on our behalf is not fair to us. I would also be pleased if, uh, the miners or whenever they relocating the mines. They should ensure that they don't leave any, uh, uh, things of sort of portals. Uh, instead, they should make sure that there's, uh, economic growth, um, whenever they relocate the mines. So that we can leave the place empowered in the benefit of the large community. I thank you, chair.
Goe dag, voerseter in the leisure shop of the parliament. Ek willi, ba, graag bedank for juli geleentijd. Eh, ek heet wel die werkswinkel bij gewoon voor jullie wetsonwerp. En met respect kan ek zei dat ek jullie wetsonwerp ondersteun met sekere voorwaardes. Punt nummer één is dat ek die parlement graag wil anmoedig. Om te gaan kijken naar koeis is, wanneer het komt bij die mine. Vooral wanneer het met betrekking heet door die mine in ons omgeving. Daar is ook gevallen waar die municipaliteit in die mine erwe en grondgedeeltes besit. Wat eerder der die gemeenschap in het kan worden. Dan wil ik ook voor ien noem, dat ien moet gaan kijken naar die posten wat toegeken wordt in die municipaliteit. Jullie posten wordt toegeken aan mensen met een neke of sekere fane. En daar die mensen met daar die sekere fane kan ook uitgeken worden der die deervoertijde wetterlei. Zo daar is nie rechte geleentijd voor gewone mensen in ons gemeenschap om geleentje te krijgen, tenzay, alles speciale fane heet nie. Verdens is die stof op die mine, en die stof is die mine veroorzaak. Dit is een groot impact op ons jeugd en ons gezondheid. En belemer ons, ons gezondheid en ons vermogens om beter te kan leven. Dan wil ik op nummer, punt nummer vijf, klemle op kenis en bemachtiging. Ek wil ba, vereeg wees, als die gemeenschap, als die regering, aan ons jeugd en ons bejaardes. Meer inlichting kan verschaffen, ons kan bemachtig, die jullie inlichting. Om te weten hoe ons kan anstukten verhuizen, hoe ons, wat ze voordelen daar voor ons is, wat ze hoop aan die bejaardes verleen kan worden. En ten slotte is grondbesit ook een groot probleem voor ons, ons. En ons gemeenschap kan een mens zien dat grondeienskap veroorzaaklik, um, onder die blankesval en ook onder andere rasse groepen, maar nie die mensen van hier nie. Dan wordt ons ook die parteien in die municipaliteiten van vertegenwoordig en ook mislei met inlichting wat aan ons verschakeld wordt. Ons vrouw ook, as eblief, dat die mine meer moet beleen in die economische greu van jullie gemeenschap. Zodat dit tot ons voordeel kan wees, wat die mine activiteiten doen. Ba dankie.
Um, thank you very much. Please, I've indicated that you are given three minutes to make your input. And we are talking about the bill, indicate whether you support the bill or not. We want to, we don't want to suppress you on speaking on general things. But the important thing that we are here on is this bill, because this bill is going to govern you. It's important that you make input on it, to strengthen it. So that tomorrow, when it's applied, you know that you have actually contributed.
Bahay etso, ntele ngahpe, hori, kilu kope, katwe etwe, hori. Uh, kokoni yaku pionu, ki kamola othomo, oritlen fa, kaone. Yan, hara batla, ho tima opense, ba, ka, hota, one, chunu. Kora, katisa, di, tetlebo, hota, di ngoore, ho, zeri linka, for, itle, ham, hamola othomo. Fela, ki kopa, tata, bile, ngahpe, ki bole, tora, na leme, zu teme, raro, fela. Hori, retabueka, uh, uh, di twaye, lota, lota, di tiste, kumpi.
Ons vrouw, as eblief, dat wanneer ien so liever, as eblief, so. Undau ien drie minuten, en fokus op jullie wetsonwerp, en dat ien so relevanso, wees tot jullie wetsonwerp. Ien moet, as eblief, undau, dat jullie wetsonwerp, wanneer dit werking so trie. So beere, in, in sachenskap, eh, where, where i activiteit is. Zo, dit is ba belangrijk, dat ien nou ien so liever, wandet gaan op die langtermijn, directe uitwerking op die. En daarom moet er ons aan, om persoonlijk te blij. Ba dankie. Ma.
Um, kiala du medisa, lo, tje, mo holo, eh, tata, anso, holo, bay, barona ba parlament. Na ki matlaka, la, kocho, kuma, hojanen, ko, ot five. Kenale RDP, ki wutla, tato, ubuaka, ma, to, RDP, ene, kera, di le, tata, ka, ubuaka. Katse, le, tjo, ya, ba, ach. Bahay, jorana, ma, tata, RDP, na, seki, sito, mo, heson, ki, hori, di tendera, zedi, newa, ba, troba, akamato, di RDP. Ki boza, parlamentele, ha, hori, ama, akanyaa, akamato, di RDP. Ai newa, hela, bo ne, ba, troa, lo, hori, bana le, madi, oro, baba sina, madi. Me ki la, mocha, mo, 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 one point five. Ibuaka, hori, ebata, ho, ho, le, ka, hori, ne. Ha kiti, ai, dirile, or, eh, kor, bluar, loa, ba, ta. Loa, lutlas, o, sonso, loa, ba, ta, or, loa, ho, dir. Ho, tnyaba, troba, ba, ncha, mo, 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 systemia, ya, di tendera, ta, hori, akamato. Ntiwa, ya, ka, ya, RDP. Ses utu sabo, trokoo, ra, haetso, ma, to, ma, to, ha, di pula dina. Eh, pula ya, ten, na, mo, mo, ma, poten, ma, ro, hubuaka, tsirele, ju. En eki, batla, ho, zo, re, ntiwa, RDP, ha, we, haetso, horu, ne, mo, hori, yo ne. Hubu itele, lo, horu, we, na, ba, ta, di ba, ho, ba, trokahaala, family ya, ta, ma, ya, beneficiary, ki, bana, ba, ha, ho, bana, baba, nyinyani. Eh, one of the family, ya, ba, ta, hota, di si, shinika, ntiwa, eh, rekisa. Renale, ma, tata, ma, tata, RDP, kuma, hojanen, ki, tla, boka, ko, ken, nan, teni. Ba troa, le, manzi, ba, sho, ta, ka, bana, ko, ba, nan, teni. Ki, lo, ho, ha, mo, di, mo, ro, bo, lo, la, ha, kumpi, enu, ho, tro, hubuaka, ma, tata, di RDP. Honale, ba, tro, kuma, hojanen, mo, tali, es, ya, lo, kona, hori, ka, ma, tali, five, adi RDP. Alat, ala, mo, tro, ba, na, hori, mo, tali, lo, ko, ha, ba, no, wa, sokola, ha, na, le, teno, ba, ta, di, ba, trokahaetso. Wa, bobola, o, seta, la, ka, tla, ya, ba, ka, ho, ha, aba, hori, ka, ntiwa, ko, rene. Ha, ba, ba, hori, ka, ntiwa, we, ya, RDP. So, ki, batla, ho, zo, ma, tata, RDP, ya, ana, ha, na, me, la, o. Because ki, kriem, mahala, ha, ke, espandale, even la, le, tenranta. Mar, na, ki, kona, hori, ne, mo, tali, la, a, tro, re, reka, mo, kona, ka, sixty thousand, te. En na, ba, ta, ho, drabistis, mo, hori, yo ne. So, ki, kopa, hori, parlamentele, la, kalule, ha, ba, haetso, lo, tje, ma, sapaka, ma, tata, di RDP. Renale, ma, to, asa, hela, la, un, koma, hojanen, ala, hori, ne, ana, ah, hi, le. Hubu, tendera, tex, bu, hu, hela, sa, ho, drablan, ka, un, ho, ti, tro, ku, northweste. Ma, to, wa, rebela, sa, di, tini, so, mo, lo, hori, ma, to, di, wa, na, la, kati, anele, unsafe. Ba, tu, ba, ba, bana, mo, wa, ho, tla, ba, le, di, animal, ta, ba, tu, mole. Re hela, ta, ma, to, di, sa, ta, hori, le, ba, ah, hi, ha, se, fufu, ba, na, barona, le, ro, na. De bra, tu, wa, di, tini, sa, ten, ba, ba, di, tele, ba, bono, ro, ho, mo, cholo, hori, ba, di, diris. So, recopa, hori, parlamentele, mo, special, mo, ma, tro. Honale, ba, ho, ba, bana, mo, muti, baba sokola, baba sina, le, teno, etol. Mo, seri, yana, ab, ho, la, granti, ana, li, li, pe, di, wa, na, to, kati, mo, seri, yana, kati, ho, lo. Ala, ko, kaka, mas, ma, ma, to, me, la, bo ne, ba, na, ba, le, ba, ja, ona, mo, shenti. En, ma, to, apushe, ra, ha, hela, na, kumaspala, recopa. Ene ma tadi apusha ra achelan, Maspala rekopa parlement, before ma tadi RDP ahriwa, Maspala kajone sali hats, lo shawara ma tadi ra ahriwa hakai, nou er karbuayana, ritlo kana mo crisis scene kuma rojane, kuma RDP code five. More nantei ni pulay na, kana le some of batoa lo hori ngi, nou ra achetjo pavement. Pavementele metianta kana khutwa, atlo la kustrating, analo kwayanté, nou yana ha utwa mo jarating, ota milo pakke di tene ut. Ha usina hori, hori okapaka di tene sa tchokodirek, kima tat. Ma tadi ra di puladina, metianta mo ta kantu, akho chokok hori kumurak, orasana koko marak chokoke ukupi. Rekopa hori parlemente, before ma tadi ahriwa, or, lo tholo tholo sa di tanda ra li di sa koma Spala, ene nginalo apwen tam batoa lemanzi tendar, because or koma Spala khutwa se bukhwene khwene. Nanka veki ti man man koma Spala, kahora ne kinala le tendara, or kinala le company, ki shontore ke, 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 tendara ma tadi ejo. Ha uti nyuan na, halaka papan sa he tchokobuaka, bukhira five million, mo five million ne wa, tamilaki moné two million, ek sala kat three million, which means ya hori ka ste, ya hori ka cementese si chip, ho akhanke ewa, teko pa hori, lo shebe lo te ma sapaka mat, kialu boch.
Greetings Chair and the rest of the committee members in the Parliament. My name is Matlakala from Mahojane, if I call it right. Well, let me start by indicating that I also do have an RDP. And I'm pleased with the fact that there's something speaking with the protection of RDP owners. However, my point is, let me shoot straight to one point five. I'm still uncertain about what you're trying to talk to us in that specific point. So please make it clear to me if you are still intending to initiate this bill or you're still about to discuss how you go about that specific point in one point five. Badly or certainly, my own RDP that I've just indicated above is leaking badly and I'm wondering if there's any body that can take the effort to address or to see to it that they mitigate the issue of the leaking RDPs as already specified on mine. In Mahojane, on my second point is that there are people, allow me to also reference on the previous speaker, that those that are more privileged, privileged with more money, you find that a person will buy close to five to 10 houses simply because maybe they aren't reached and to their benefit of building more houses and in the process we are struggling, especially those that haven't got an opportunity to acquire an RDP. In the same breath, in Mahojane, there's an issue with our roads. Sometimes, especially when it's raining heavily, one has to initiate to perhaps use some small bricks just to create a walk-through so that you don't find yourself perhaps injured by those bad roads. Mrs. Chair, please also take note that this vandalism of RDP is actually causing a security issue, particularly to our elders. They, that they're facing risks of being unsafe. Some elders, in fact, they rely from hand to mouth in feeding their, their kids because they don't have sufficient income to sustain their lives. Well, lastly, Chairperson, can I urge you humbly to see to it that this tenders, we should, you as Parliament, to refrain from taking these tenders to municipalities because as we know, it's a, it's a common factor that people that are handling these tenders, they are actually demanding bribes from us and therefore if you don't have sufficient money to acquire a tender, that will be a loss for you and this is only advantageous to those that are money. Thank you, Chair.
Let's wait for translation on Afrikaans.
Goeedag, voorste der, en aan die commitee bij. Danku vir hieri geleentijd. Ek is blij om te zien dat daar in punt nummer één, één punt vijf, nummers gemakes van HOPA AENAS. Ek wil net wet, sal nieve beschwene ingesleid word in hieri, in hieri nieve wetsontwerp? Of sal daar niet besprekingswees grond om nieve ein, intriders vir HOPA hei, onder punt nummer één punt vijf? Dan wil ik verienum dat mensen wat meer bevoorrecht is, barre meer huisen kan koop. Tussen vijf tot tien huis op beslag en dan weer inkomsten daaruit genereer, waar die meerheid van ons sikkel zelfs om één huis te bekomen en om, om te oerleef. En die gebied waar ik woon in Majuning, heet ons ook barre probleeme met, met wanneer het reen en die paaien is barre onveilig vir ons en ons zelf planen moet maak om nie oer die paaien te kan kom en, en ons zelf veilig duh en daar hier gevallen. Dan ook moet HOPA hei, heet ons een probleem met ver, wanneer het kom bij bijardes en daarle veiligheid en daarle securiteit vir hieri hei. Want hieri bijardes leef, leef van hand tot mond, daarle heet scars genoeg geld om te oerleef en daar nog om hieri huis in stand duh en wet dit vir daarle zelf te kan hou. Ons moet ik i aan om nie tenders naar die municipaliteit te verwijst nie, want ons weet zelf, ons geal gesin heet, dat die municipaliteit toe la dat daar omkooperij plaatsvindt om tenders te krijgen en dit bevordiel nie die wat leeds bevordield is. En die van ons wat geleentiere nourig heet maar nie die, die fondse heet om hieri omkoopgeld te betaal, blij steeds achter.
Next, please don't forget that we are talking about the bill. You should indicate whether you support the bill or you reject the bill.
Thank you, Chair. Greetings to you, Chair, and the whole House and honorable members of the Parliament. My name is never changed. I'm still Ompemeze Kesni Theododrich Mochosi. I'm from Mapote. Ma'am, I agree to disagree with the bill of. I will go to two point one, point one, where it states economic employment and infrastructure development. Ma'am, unfortunately with that one of the economic, if we can perhaps take other provinces to consideration, provinces like Northern Cape. You have recognized Joburg amongst all the provinces in South Africa, followed by Deben, followed by Cape Town. So we, 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 we only have three money flow in our country. Where is Johannesburg, Cape Town and Deben. So unfortunately, we from Northern Cape will forever be used to make other people wealthier and wealthier and even richer. Mine is to say that can we also be recognized and taken to consideration as the community members from Northern Cape? The Parliament has never ever represented us in anything when we talk about Northern Cape, it tends to be South Africa. For example, in terms of employment, we have a huge mine there called Anglo-America or Kumba. We are benefiting nothing, there's nothing conducive that we're getting or benefiting from that mine. Yet we know that one of your superiors have shares in this mines that we're talking about. So automatically when we fight the mines, we are fighting the political parties, some of them. So unfortunately, we will be here, we will submit our grievances or we will submit our suggestion to add, but then we know that is just a formality unfortunately, ma'am. In terms of employment, for me to enter Parliament, which criteria are you following or which qualifications do I necessarily have to have also to be also an employee of the Parliament? In infrastructure development, we'll never have this because we don't have access to our land. When we were given a chance to obtain our land, we would have easily developed in terms of infrastructure. But because of we don't have lands, we can never develop in terms of infrastructure. So mine was to say that also there in the Parliament, please send this message to our honorable President Ramaphosa to say that can we also please invest in the youth whereby we take youth and train them into whatever you are doing in the Parliament so that we can tend to come with a resolution towards whatever problems that we are having. It can never be that we allow forever to be led and people to preside over us whereby they are elderly people. It does not necessarily mean that when you are young, you are not capacitated or intelligent. It's not what is on the outside but it's what is inside. Thank you very much.
Danku voorste der. Ek wil graag say ek ondersteen hieri wetsontwerp, kraftens i tim tuipen, enpint één, wat brood van economische, economische ontwikkeling, werksgeleenteren en informele ontwikkeling wil ek graag paar item slig. Daar is economische kwesties wat ons in acht moet neem. Iet paar plekken genoemsen Johannesburg terba en Kaapstad, wat basis die driepronen van geldflui in die land is, maar ons als een provincie moet ook in acht geneemt word. Dan kan ons ook nie net gebruik word om ander reik te maak nie. Die parlement verteenwoordig ons nie in enige iets nie. Dan is daar ook werksgeleenteren onder hieri item wat genoom is. Daar is een mine, zoals Anglo-American, wat barre geld maak, maar ons als een gemeenschap krijg nie voordeel nie. Zelfs daar iemand in i commitee heet andele daar, of een van i oppervuft heet andele daar. Ons weet dat om ons voorstellen in te dien en ons schreven in te dien is bloot de formaliteit. Ons wil ook wet als ons in die parlement wil werk wat is die vereist is om ansoek te doen en wanneer het kom bij infrastruktur onder hieri item, kan ons nie ons infrastruktur verbeter nie, want ons ek nie toegang tot grond nie. En zo zal ons nie kan vooruitgaan in ontwikkel nie. Ons vraag as eblief dat i hieri komernisse naar die presidentie so fat en om anmoedig om in die jeugd te beleen, zodat ons hieri kwesties kan oplossen. Ons kan nie altijd als jeugd geleid word der ouer mensen nie. Wanneer ouer mensen denk die jeugd heet nie die vorige op ikendag heit nie en dit is nie noodvindig die soek nie. Danku.
Kialu bocha, moradisi mota misa tiro, lelo kolahako. Mo, mo kilen in ten fan, na kidumalana, kichana, kichana na le, mo laudfomo riklenka, kawane fakumpi eno. Eri, ntelo kasiya sebaka, ki, ki wega kanye ekwa diluen, momo laudfomo ngo, elenwa one point one, eyuanka, ka economi, lidi peto. Motamisi, literi die provincie, di swana lebo Johannesburg, kapabupiri ma, lebo Deben. Me fehla, provincia rona ha eti uytiya. Ko payaka ke hori, leretetiya, sohlebo khuloyan rona releba sha, ba Northern Cape, mukuruman. Renale ma ene wa pilele rona fa, ba obita Anglo-American, memo ma ene ngo, kare unwe sepere rona releba akiba Kuruman. Mo leba ken la mereko, moradisi, ki ko pa horo, on talosete, gama nanéo, alat yang, hori mo hwe, wa koshana le na yakake le mo sha, hori tiro, ngai bo na yang, hakiti melli, tame iso, ele beile, ho tapaba diri, mukusho nyalona. La me, lelo holo, le foko ki hori, ki ko pa horo, on piti sete mo la etao, koho mo presidenté Afrika bo roa, elen ye ne, mo presidenté sirar Ramaphosa hori. Rekopa katwetwet, renale ba akis, sohlebo khuloyan rele ba sha, hori retentiya, ivila leretogo mele, leretogo mele, kialu bocha.
Next.
Parlemente ame ra te rang, kialu dumedi is. Le lotre mo, mo holo ye na. Yo buanga, ki ulihile Brian Muzumi, khutwa, motana koli barre ke ba batas. What two? Motlatsa ha, majoro han dis, motlatsa ha, mo kansalara ditup. Twenty minutes, twenty kilometers to Kadu, twenty kilos to Kuruman. Ki kola, parlemente ya rona, esaiti kaha muzuwa. Hakibala hako dimua, ya bani ba mo matlu. Rona haba batasiali, haritis sepeka mat. Hakabono khubuaka, mi kuku, kaberi chalo ka. Me ki khaali, 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 renale twelve years rekopa mat. Panpriditama, ditama, ditama, kare kreeka, kara boi yepi, koto kopa parlemente nyarona. Detis weki re, parlemente ha iti sepeka harona. Ki kola hori, parlemente yo kela hanwa, mo, lailo opwa bo ne, ha iti muzuuli. So, kimi kere tota hanwa, khubuaka, ba, ba bana, mo matlu, be li oni, ki ha idumalana kisa misana leon. Me ibo ale, ba matlo, ha ibuika ba di shenti, ya nun rekopa yalo hori. Rekopa matlo hori, anu, er ha khubuaka bil, ri ka mahnyase kela leon, er idumalande leon. Kialu boch.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Mister Ulihile Muzumi. I am from a village called Babajos, which is in Ward Two, under the, under one of the councillors who is living in that particular area by the name Mister Gitupile. This particular village, Chair, is about twenty kilometers from it right up to here in Kuruman. So I would like to just make a point to say that you as Parliament know nothing about this village in which we live. You don't seem to be knowing whether it is even existing. Because of the fact that there hasn't been any houses, most of us, by far the greater majority of us are living in villages. So indeed, you as Parliament know nothing about this. We've been living in Schecks for some, a period of about twelve years. We have submitted so many, many papers over and over again requesting to be given houses, but nothing has happened up to this point in time. We do want to support the bill, in fact, we do, we support the bill. But now for us to be able to align ourselves very nicely with the contents of the bill, Chair, give us houses, make sure that we also are able to have houses, then we'll be able to know exactly what we are talking about when we give our support to this particular bill.
Danku voorste der. Ek kom van een gemeenschap so twintig kilometer bijte Kuruman. Ek wil niet verienum dat die parlement absoluut nie idee heet wat in ons dorpje angani. Ons heet nie huisen nie. Ons woon al vir die afgelopen twaalf jaren sinkhuisen en steer te vergeefs huisen, e briwe verhuisen om aan ons gesteer te word of geget te word, maar absoluut niks komt daarvan af nie. Ons wil graag heet der hieri wetsontwerp met CF, maar ons kan dit nie doen. Als ons nie huis heet nie, ons moet ik i aan om voor ons huis te gehe, dat ons kan verstaan voor hieri wetsontwerp gaan.
Greetings to the House and observing all protocol. My name is Joey Cantilu and I am partially in support of the, of the bill. My reason for saying this, I am from a rural municipality from Jomaralong with more than two hundred villages in the municipality. We had a project years back in the municipality, a rural housing project, where about a thousand, a thousand houses were constructed. However, I, I see now in the bill that there is a warranty fund or there's a proposal of a warranty fund for houses that have been constructed. However, want to point out that at the time, the, there was a lot of red tape with enrolling or registering projects with. However, want to point out that at the time, there was a lot of red tape with enrolling or registering projects with NHPRC. And in that instance, there was a lot of vandalism that happened in those houses because of a lack of beneficiaries to occupy the houses. And currently, we're sitting with some houses that are vandalized and no beneficiaries can occupy those houses mainly because of that vandalism that happened there. So, what I wanted to also ask from this is what the difference is between enrollment and registration on NHPRC? Because the project was enrolled, but the actual house for each beneficiary was not registered to NHPRC. So that they can then benefit from this warranty fund. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that reading this bill, I feel that it does not necessarily protect beneficiaries that are living on tribal land. The reason for this is that as a beneficiary living on tribal land, you can never have a title deed. The only thing that you would have to show that you own a house is a happy letter or what we call a permission to occupy a house. Which brings me to the question that with all the red tape that was previously there in terms of registering a house with NHPRC. One of the red tapes there was that if you're under tribal land, that does not cover you. So, I feel that this is still not gonna cover all those people that are living on the tribal land. Chair, I'm saying that this bill is, I'm supportive of this bill. Because for once, I think the contractors that are appointed to build these houses are gonna be accountable for the quality that they put on the ground. However, it is not enforcing that because reading through it, I do not see where the enforcement of the bill where it says the contractor will be held liable for the quality on the ground that he delivers. Although he'll be registered with the council, but it does not clearly state what the fine will be. Because currently Chair, we're sitting with a number of houses that were not completed by previous contractors. Whether appointed by the municipality or appointed by the Department of Human Settlements. Either way, performance of contractors is also killing the construction of housing in the province or specifically in our local area. A contractor comes to site, throws a few slabs, gets a few houses up to window level, to roof level, and then that's it. That's the last we'll be hearing from the contractor. And nothing is done or no steps are taken to rectify that in terms of his insurance that we could took, his insurance could be used probably to appoint another contractor that can complete the project. We then left with beneficiaries that are in slabs, that are sitting with slabs with incomplete houses, of which is not their doing. All beneficiaries want houses. So I really hope that this bill will enforce stricter measures that are gonna be taken for those types of contractors. My last point of departure Chair is in Jomorolong, a conscious decision was taken that only in situ houses would be built. That means houses inside the yards. Because we tried asking for land from the tribal authority to build, but that came with its challenges because we couldn't get beneficiaries to occupy these houses. But the other challenge that we're facing is that the needs register will be, will be filled to identify what need you have in villages of houses. The wait, and then we wait forever. The business plan is submitted to the department and nothing happens. And then recently, we had a disaster, floods, that took away the very houses that we needed to be rectified through the human settlements projects. And those houses were flooded away and still those beneficiaries are still in need of housing. Mind you, they were in mudhouses or houses that were not fit for human consumption. And now the disaster came and we're still waiting. And with that wait, again, there was an intervention for temporary shelters and that is also a wait. So, I don't know how that can be put in the bill that who's now protecting the rights of these consumers who have been waiting for houses for years, Chair? And when they finally get a glimpse of hope that they'll be finally getting a house and still there's red tape or a wait, which is not of their doing. So, in conclusion Chair, I am in support of the bill, but I think it needs to also look at especially the rural areas where no title deeds are issued. And how the council will then protect the beneficiaries in those villages. I thank you.
Bye, dank je voor zitter. Ik wil voor iets heet dat ik ondersteun hierdie wets en waarp gedeeldlik. Ik stiel van die Jomorolong Municipiteit in ons het oor als meer dan twee honderd dorpjes. Lang terug wat ons een landelijke wijstingspreek in die area gehad, waar het drijf en hijze gebouwd is. Ik zie nou dat wordt nou verwijzing gemaakt aan die warburgfonds. Nou, ik weet nie hoe dit ons nou kan helpen nee, maar lang terug toen ze die preek gehad heet, was het al mooi rondslomp wat bij die NHPRC was. En mooi van die huizen wat toen nou gebouwd is, het mooi mensen gefanteriseer, die huizen staan leeg, die beginst zich, dit kan niet daar woont nee. Zulak, ik wil niet wet wat verschuld is in de inschrijving, denoemde registratie. Want ons weet die die huizen is ingeschrijfd, maar is niet geregistreerd nee. En dan wil ons weer, is dat enige bescherming voor mensen wat huizen op dat traditionele grond heet? Want daar die mensen het nie een titel acte nee, maar helle tente tustimmingsbrief ontvang om daar te woont. En al hierdie rondslomp met die NHPRC, is dit gaan, wat dan siedo, is het nou deel van traditionele grond, kan hierdie voor ons duidelijk gemaakt worden? Ik ondersteun hierdie wets en waarp, want het gaan maken het contracteerst ansprekkelijk gauw wordt. Die probleem met ons heet is die toepassing. Hoe gaan hierdie boetes toegepas wordt? Hoe gaan helle ansprekkelijk gauw wordt voor die groot aantal onvoldoende huizen wat er dan niet voltoe, vol, klaar gemaakt heet nee? En ook die prestatie van die contracteerst, hoe helle huizen niet voltoen nee? Steeds is die mensen wat onvoldoende huizen heet, en hierdie, dat is beginst zich, dat is wat wacht voor die huizen. Ik vroeg er of strenger materials in plaats gestaald wordt. Dat is onlangs besluit genomen in die Municipiteit dat die huizen niet op die erwe gebouwd zal worden. Nou, die wachtijdperk om goedkering te krijgen voor huis is verschrikkelijk lang. Nou, wacht die mensen zo lang met die wippe te la huis krijt, maar die huis wordt niet voltoe tot en met de fenster omhoog of dakhoefte die contracteer vertwijnt. Wierens wacht die mensen weer. Onlangs het ons flui de ervaring ons huizen is beschodig, dat is nog steeds beginst zich, dat is wat huizen nodig heet. En hierdie mensen wat wacht, zo lang wacht voor huis, helle rechte wordt geskend als gevolg van die rondslomp wat ons ervaren. Bye, dank je.
Ja, lebocha, modula studlo, lena ki kinebatla, ho tshala, fano fakore, molakomor onu o, ral amo gela, tiao amo gela, feela tio, amo gela, isengabo tlalo, kala bakalaho, re kinala ma baka. Ki motyo tzw. me tse, gama tswaman di village, se mo kum tse, ekitzwankohyo ne, ki di village zeri kan nan two hundred kapalo. Khileh kanali di projekte, mo di rural housing, za horre hoa kwe di di rural housing, horre tzw. tse. Me ano sekis se eten trokwa, hakishaba, molakomor oro tatlanka one kumpionaya na. Ki tumela horu ubuagakhanya, horu honali di warranty fund, se tla diri se dyuan, ho siireleza bani ba mo mo matlu. Ho neja nun jana, sisi dira kantio horu, mo tse, yo ya rona, matlu amango a tu belwa, a singwa, en haasana ho senyeka, asala ho sana opwayo na ngmuteng hawo na. Me hubonala jaga ekitamala, komor onu o, tota hau boonce horu ho siireleza, bani ba matlu antenjalo. Khileh akwa diswa projekte, ya horre, ho akwiya matlu, eh projekte ene etwane tse, horre, esole kale mo le mo beng ba matlu antenjalo. Me hakishaba sentle, hakiboni jaga ekitè, molakomor onu o, wa ba siireleza, katela e ino tzw. o ba siireleza kyon. Kala bakalaho, re number one, haba nali matlu, haba nebe di title deed, banne wa feela se hotuingi, eh permit ya to occupy a house, le kualo tse, tla lakonamunku. Se nu simponsa, horre, NHPRC leon, ne kaiti ma ta ba, hago ba siireleza katwane, le kala bakalaho, re, hamo two ona, o achilenklo, mo keshaba se bizan, horre ki tribal land. Ebé, kachalo ha ke ma tata. Ha hona hopo, molakomor onu o, ubuandeng, horre, borra di kontraka baba achilenklo, en o ba tla sikera ma ikarabe lo, hago bo inklo ewo, esahonah kijitse sepe la, kana kwa ya ma tata. So dido tse, nu dira bakala ma tata aseng kana kasepe. Boonce ba di kontraka se dyungo ba ha matlu, afi kachala ko ma rulelo. Ho tla ha mo ba nelela, hara choleri, zuhore ba iloko kai, motyo nen, atwane tse, horre inklo ewo ene ya kahwe, ha benefiti sepe. And then hara re registera, honali matlu, re manu baka, lulu tele tata. Ha honali me roalela, matlu arona awa, di projekte dia senyeka, hara siirele diwi. Ho akwiwa di temporary structures, ha matlu sana ho senyeka, and then tsone, le tsona hadiri tusika sepeka, hona di buko wa di senyeka mo trofu. Molakomor tota hauri siirele tse. Ki kalonela bakalaki keringi o, amo gela kana kwa na feela, ho vikela o baka one, le ho toka fadiwa. Mo, ho tla bonala sentle, tse, horu, o kana ho siireleza, bani mo matlu, kiallebocha.
Dumelan bakaro. Na kidite bocho, si bua singwe. I'm a housing officer at Hamachara Local Municipality. I did attend the engagement workshop and I'm also partially to the bill. The reason is that the bill only seemed to address issues that are in the urban areas. But JTG, where we are, most of the areas are urban areas. So the bill is not talking to our conditions in the area. For starters, also I've noticed that the bill talk about the duties of different role players, but is not addressing the role of the local government and the role of traditional leaders. And then the other thing is, the bill is not covering damages that happens due to storms. So I believe maybe it can be looked at so that the warranty can also be extended to that. And then chapter six, four B, it talks about developers only subcontracting work to people who are registered on the register. However, I feel that the bill is not helping our people. Because we have a lot of emerging home builders who are not yet registered. I think it should rather be saying developers should hire those home builders with the condition that they will assist those people to, they first, they should first train those people. And thereafter, they should now help them enroll to the register. And then another thing is that NHPRC tends to scrap people because they didn't pay the annual fees. So I believe that it's unfair to preclude people from opportunities just because they didn't pay the annual fees. So perhaps what they can consider is issue a letter that allows, that says this person is registered even though he hasn't paid the annual fees. But he should, and that letter can only be used per tender like what the occupational people do. You only use that particular letter for a specific tender and then that's it. So that the person can now make money so that he'd be able to now pay the annual fees. And then one other thing is that we live in a rural area. We live in an area that has dolomite. And if one wants to build a house, NHPRC tells them that they should do all the studies. You're supposed to hire somebody to come and drill a hole and then do the studies that relates to geotech, that relates to dolomite investigations. And those specific things, they are very expensive and our people cannot afford to do that. And because they cannot afford to do that, they end up resorting to building houses without enrolling them. Otherwise, if they don't do that, then our people are gonna be homeless because now they will be living in houses that they wouldn't have houses, basically. So I believe that NHPRC should consider, either force municipalities or developers before they sell stands to people. They should rather make sure that all those studies that need to be done are taken care of. So that a homeowner should only concentrate on issues that relates to building a house. Instead of having to go to do all these tests that are very expensive. Thank you very much. Others, you can register them there.
Ja, lebocha, modula studlo, ki, mu di, nalila laka, ki, re te bocho. Me ki, mu diro, hoza, ki mo officiri wa, di kahjo za matlu. Lenna feela jaga si buisa se fitile, ki rataku tshalo sa fano fakore. Ki tseheta, molakomor onu, isengabo tlalo, kahone lena kinala ma baka, afaro lha haney. Sekis se bonaka, malakomor waro, namolakomor waro na, ha u, ha u adresse, ma ikarabe lo, a, ba etele di pele baseto. Ha u, uto o, kaka kanya, horre, a, honale baka nee, zo ya hooduelo la di senyeka, lo za handlo, ekasenyeka, hoza ya panyeka. Releza ekitè ho kali, joaslo, se sentenjalo, me ho ok diwe warranty ya matlu arona. Mo ko chapter six, four D, hubuwa fano faka di developers za rona. Nka ere le mu kilen fano faka, horre. Honale mo ko pola, horu ba tabakeke bakonaho, aha matlu fa feela, elohor ha ba registera. Ha elohor se ho tsa ma yualeso ne. Horu, horu, molakomor waro na, tota ha utusi ba harona. Ba bangwe ha ba kono, horu, hubo basa registera, kajalo, horu, horu ba kaske bannali matlu, ha elohor kaiti ba registera. Releza ekitèi, molakomor waro na, o kali ban tsa, en me hona le tsa la ya ho ba tusa, horu ba kono kijikwa disa. Kajalo, NHRBC leon, ne katela etwana, raize horu, ele ba le ba na le horu hona lidi annual fee. Kana konge, hamo two, elohor ha pa tela, annual fee me anale le kualo. La horu, uwi, uwi, uwi kwa disi se, a batla ho a handlo, a tuswa ho aha, kasekai. Batu baba, le mo, rona batu barle, mo mitlo ya, mo, mo mitse selaxayen. Renna mo, le felo lele nalidi dolomite. Vikela horu, ha u batla ho a handlo, ho twanisohu, kijitè, se di expensive. Za ho tla ho, kwe ba di ku, di to drill the holes. And then, horu, ho diro se se sentenjalo, ho jamadi amanis, kajalo, ba le ba nis ha ba kono. Honali ma di, a horu tiro enu, i tiro, elohor, horre, tiro ya bo ne, ha ba tla ho aha matlu, eketse lepele. Kajalo, ha ba kono, honali matlu, kahone se na ha ba se kono, kajalo, releza ekitè, NHPRC, leon ekaka, kanyza bo, emojono jojo, ho bona, horre, ba ka tusa jan. Ba twanishe, ba, ba bueli di developers, ba twanishe, horu ba di re di studies, elohor motyo a handlo. Ene, askatwane akaka, di lo tse dyunse, di nse tse no tse. Aswane akaka, feela kahjo a handlo, elohor tse dyunse, zo kletse, di leza thokomela ki, ma ho tla, atwana le aw, le, ba bangwe ma ikarabe la, kahjo di ra di studies itseu, me bo, ne batla bakonaho, aha handlo, eba ya batla.
Bye, dank je voor zitter. Ik heet die werksvinkel bij gewoon. En ik wil niet aanie se, ik kan hierdie wets en waarp gedeeldlik ondersteun. Maar hierdie verwijzing specifiek nou ons toestanden nee. Die wets en waarp ma verwijzing naar verschillende rollspelers, maar, we verwijzen naar die plaselijke regering of die traditionele leiers wat in de rol is zal wees nee. Dat wordt ook nie verwijzen naar score vergoeding wat toestand zal worden als gevolg van storms of natuurlijke rampen nee. Ons moet zeker maak dat die warburgfonds ook dit inslijdt. Dan, chapter six, vier B, dat nou vol verwijzing gemaakt naar die mensen wat geregistreerd is. Maar ontlike, ontlikende heispowers, wat nog nie geregistreer is nie, nog nie geleend het gehad, onterегистreer nee. Hierdie mensen moet angestaan worden der ontwikelaars. Die ontwikelaars moeten voorworden hee, dat zodra een project voltoe is, dat hierdie mensen zal registreer. Dit zullen ze dan helpen. Het probleem met ons ervaren met die NHPRC is dat helle scrap mensen van die register af als ze de hele jaarlijkse voer betalen nee. Maar dit is ondrachtverdig. Als dat ontlikende contracteer is wat sikkel om om sij om voja te betal mo ro ein brief van omgegeer wordt hij moet dan die brief kan gebruiken om een specifieke antwoord te doen bij tender en do na wanhe die geld heet kan hij sij voja betal ons area we ons woen is een landelijke area das baia dolomite nou wanneer de mensen heis to ba bouwen in serie NHBRG nee meromu nou studies gedoen word van die grond en 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 dit is baia di er om dit te doen heis ayano kan i be kostig om dit te doen ne dit veroorstok dat di mensen heis gebouw wat daan nie kurek gebouw is ne of daan mensen is wat nie heis heet ne en dat die heis nie ingeschrijf is ne zo ons vroeger die NHBRG moet as de blieft die municipiteit te zelfs die ontwikelaar forscheer om hier di studies zelf te doen boi danki
Good afternoon everyone my name is Kewaki Le Toto I'm from Mapote Katu Without wasting any time Kamola wa kensele ho tloka kore ho tloko mele se u osi tloka ngan le ho sumarela so me ki boza kore kensele etla feleleza ere dre tse ja Kamola o ore re tse bisa kahore ba kolo baro na basese basa kela ba re tloka Kamola wa kensele ho tloka kore ho tloko mele se osi tloka le ho sumarela so me ki boza kore kensele etla feleleza ere dre tse ja Kamola o ore tse bisa kahore ba kolo baro na asa kela ba re tloka kore tloko me la ba tloka tloko mele mo koro na me fe la tata hakon hakon tloka hakon tloki kore oska wa tse bangwa noilo kore kharu tse eka kahobani re ro tse kasi re re ne successfully in a decade so tloka broko ya ro na lo ne kio ne tiro lo ne RDPs kialeboja
Thank you very chair I am from Katu and then I just want to say that whenever every time when you have a a property of high value you need to take good care of it now the question that I just want to raise about most of the beautiful things that are being spoken about is will you fulfill your promises the promises that you are making through this bill right now we are in a situation where we are not successful when it comes to doing things that we are supposed to do for an example our elders and our parents are actually dependent on us we have been totally inaccessible in lives we are not able to help them in any way because our biggest problem right now is unemployment and a need for the RDP houses will you fulfill those promises so that we can be able to render them help which they need thank you
Boi danki forzeter ak kom vanaf Katu in ak wonet di so ons baia moo dinga gese wat verschiedene mensen geoperet ak wonet di uk se dat as de mensen eindom besit van hoee worde moet de mensen hier di eindom opas mijn vraag aan i is is zal i i beloftes vervol die beloftes wat i maken hier di wetsundwarb nou zelfs ons ouers diestal mag zat op ons en die probleem is ons kan i altijd verlegen wat norrig is ne die grootste behoeftes wat ons nou heet is verwerk en hauwe peheise zo ak vrai i zal i i belofta an ons nou kom metiri wetsundwarb boi danki
Dumelang pachacho nalina la me ki kialeboja ki ma konsela ra wa koro ya boongwe koto koihe nevle kaka la tota na ki dumele tse kore lubo lutileka kua nu kira taho re leboja pusho arona ere katalela ki dumele tse kore lebeleleka kua nu ho bonsa kore eh lutrisa di tere lokoba tu janon kona le singo seke kopan koro lo se ede momo lauteo nga kore ro na ba re jo angoma xaiin enne kore eh recreya di title deed komitsing kahore ba to ba komitsing kaba na di title deed so lue ede momo lao kore re ne le di title deed se singo kapisai kene ki se kopa le ho botza tota kene ki kopa ho botza pocho kore kau seto wa achile ya ka baba sete mbahile kota kona le mula wa na otlengwa kore kochanit zu kore eh ba ba registera janon kau seto wa achile already more than ho aho dira kala anka wena eh le kore eh luaito kore ba re jo ango kona koma xaiin goa ota bo shebe le kore o o o o kereye motwele kore wa mafo tota oh kona kumuduela janon alu naleka mo kolo aho dira anka tenki na kana koro lo ede kore ba to baba le angoma xaiin momo lao owa ba ba tre ni wehongwe kore ba kono kore ba nele tse ne diskilite wa sa ho discertificate tse ot sa kore ba kono kua kela ba to koma xaiin eh enwe ki ona ewa ya bo rakontraka tota baba basete ba buileka ye one ya kore bo rakontraka ba tse elwe kona le di le kore kaba ba to ke lo kota ho tloke la heela rakontraka wa tse na anden wa aha wacho wa ta ma kahona maikara belo a hakiti kora alu takonaho ede momo lao koro kuti siwe mula wa kore ba to bawa ba ba tse elwe hakiti kore ki ba jang ba situana le shone se se kane tse wule mo chuan ba kaha mele diwe macho ba batla kora kaba tla ho tere la ba tu kahore ho lo konzi kaba to ba tla koma xaiin eka re eh ho juwa kama xaito tota ho tla heela ho tu kona le matro ale hundred ko bo hele longwa achilo matro ale five janon pusho eleke ho kaha ma ta tata mula wa kore kona le di tla morajo morajo kamo wa enne mutla se kaha mula wa nor na lo ne lubo ne kore macho ha ro na ba kachu baba ne mbaa ba atendile ba ne ba le ba anyenyane akere ro na renre sa atenda eh kama ba kahore renre le besa kahore tse anten janon kene ki kope la heela kahore hakiti tse na ha ke sili ewa kasi a matro hakiti tse na ha reo ikara bela anka za transporto ki ukule kore eh lule kilo kore tuso koro loko luduela le di transporto zo mar eka re ro na re jo hundred and sixty kilos kara ba le lo mo te meren resio kona le combiadi what committee ke kopa kore eh ba ta ma isi tusan kore lule ke ngoe tse nyamoa kahore re jo kaka la tota hundred and sixty kilose enon kosa kona kha le kore rekata koka kore re tle kona le chwa elo ya kalu ro na le ba achiba South Africa kialeboja
Thank you very thank you chair my name is kialeboja I'm also a councillor from Koro ya boongwe so I'm very very happy to see you here for and having us to come up here before you so that we can actually discuss the bill I would like to please chair to consider amending the bill because in other ways from us people who are coming from the rural areas can you please amend into the bill and state that we must also be given a title deeds once houses have been built for us in the rural areas otherwise it might appear as if it is only addressing the people who are in the urban areas who do and are receiving their title deeds if you can please take consideration of that and point number two we would like to make sure that whenever someone is building a house for us it must be someone affordable because people are charging us an arm and a leg and these people when they build sometimes we know that they are they have some certificates been issued for them but now the problem that we have with many of the constructors is that they come, they build, and then they disappear and then you find that perhaps the project was not finished and unfinished house remains so now can the government please strengthen their hand to make sure that this does not happen because in our area very often you find that maybe they came they built some houses maybe about hundred houses in no time only five houses are standing what's happened to the other houses they are gone because they were not strong enough to sustain different elements of weather so now that shows the substandard when it comes to the quality of the houses that are being built for us chair we came a very long way to be here to come and add our inputs into the bill a hundred and sixty kilometers but unfortunately there hasn't been any transport prepared for us as South Africans we've got the right to come and actually make an input can you please consider that as well otherwise we are very happy to be here and participating in a discussion of this amendment bill thank you
Goedag Boi danki dat ons i i is ak is rasid van de plastikeregespeltijde ak is baia blauw ete sini so nou ak ho fi i fro of i di wetsundwarb as de blieft verder kan wijze so dat mensen met een landelijke areas blij ook dit o actes kan krijgen anders verwaisi hier di wetsundwarb man net na mensen wat nie steerlijke areas woen ook wil ik vraa as do heis gebouw wordt kan i as de blieft verseker dat die heis meer be kostigbaar kan wees dit is baia di er om heis diestal te bouw die probleem met ons werk ervaren is me contracteren wat heis bouwen dele verdwijnt neet en dan is do nog of dele pa do heis neet halfpad en dan verdwijnt dele neet hier di onvo toei de heis is een probleem ons wil as de blieft vraa de regering as de blieft kan verseker dat dit nie met ons zal gebeuren ne do schreent hier de warme honer heis gebouw wordt en net na een kleinere keer do neet vijf wat goer is dit daar under die sip standard van heis wat gebouw wordt voor ons mensen ons het van baia ver afgekom ons het wo de honer en sesdak kilometer geraam hierher te komen do was nie voor ons verveur gereel ne en as het Afrikaners voel ons dit is ons raag om i te wees weerins wil ons fi i boi danki se vergelentheid om i ne te komen boi dank
Thank you very much that was the turn that we have I should indicate that some of the issues that you are raising they are in the bill and means that we have not read the bill and we will emphasize some of the issues that are in the bill
Eriereboja tata ba kachu ka di chwa leza lo na rabata ho fe la ho li tse koro bounzi ba di chwa leza lo lozo lo di kahisat tota di ten moten Kamola koma onu ya khan fe la ya kore ere di nek katelelo e chanitze fe la to na di ten rinzer di ela koko
Boi danki ons het nou ons eerste teamsprekers gehad ons wil ook veri uitlicht dat een jella antokoes is wat genoom is reeds in hier di wetsundwarb vervat is en dit is tolko in die kosi dat die wetsundwarb nie rachtig gelees en verstaan is ne maar ons zal hieri items wat in die wetsundwarb opgevat is bespreken
The issues of the enrollment and the failure to enroll the house it's very clear on the bill itself
Die koesies waren die inschrijving en die mislukking om hieri heis in de schrijf word in hier di wetsundwarb vervat
So khan i amana nganle kui kuadi sa kui kuadi sa za enklo ho ngomu tobo feleza elo kora kha wa nale yo ne ma baka atenga khalusiwa mo de kama la koma
The bill indicated that the builder that we employ we must make sure as as community employ the builder that is registered with the NHBRC so that if there are structural defects or there is a leak of your roof for two years or five years then you can then be able to access the warranty fund to correct those defects
As a gemeenschap wanneer ein bauer angestaan met word moet i verseker dat die bauer geregisterer is bij die NHBRG zo dat as die heis nou gebouw is en daare lek is op die dak of iets foutief is met die heis en daar is een warborg van twee tot vijf jaar op wat ukal die fout is kan die warborgfonds dan genader word om uit te betal op daar die skade
Ho khalusiwa kahes moten Kamola koma waro na kore hai lo koro obata koro mongwa aho aha lenklo eh ota tapa motyo ilan koro uwi kuadi sese ko NHRBC o kuadi sese ngo koyo na ilan kora has na kha aha handlo ya kahore ar ho ngomu ba kona le matata kaka koha ya kahore enklo ya kahore ho we ya ne la dingwa kha mo 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 luba kela dingwa kha di kana pe di kova kose tano ebene koro wena o kahona kutsuwa ki warranty fund ya kala ba kala koro muachiwa kona ai kuadi sese go lukhotela NHRBC so kin kia etwanit we elek koko ewe
And is this the provision of the act it emphasizes that the house will be covered whether you alter the house you renovate or you start the new house and the house will then be covered at the duration of the building and for the next five years on structural defects and on the roof will then be two years
Goed hier di wetsundwarb mag verschillen voor die struktur voor vijf jaar en dan voor die dak voor twee jaar maar ook beide word die renefasis die anbauings ensofort ook oner hieri dakken gelas
Janon ilan koko kore eh tuso ya elo kota leno leje kanya kore eh enklo ya kora etla kona kova riwa eh ho tuso ha i nale le matata kana koya ha ilan koro mi bo obata ho fetolanto koi kavu lakasalang kosa ha ilan koro oha enklo encha kosa le kana koya ha sanza ne achiwwe kona le matata oh kona koba na tuso ense njalo kama so ma mo luba kela dingwa kha di le kano
And the bill again gives the provision of the builder, if the builder is registered with the NHPRC, he has to, there is funds that will be created for further training of those that you are raising that they don't have certificates. Then they'll be trained and get assisted for them to participate in the building environment. Because they will now be trained and get certified and therefore you'll not have, there is no need to employ a person who has not actually, has not been capacitated.
Dan zal ook in hi die wetzondwerp verschining gemaak word vir mensen wanneer het geregistreer word bij die NHPRC, om opleiding te krij. Om gepaciteerde word om hi die heisen te kan bou. Zodat moet nie in die toekomst kuesie wees dat hi die mensen nie gepaciteer is om in staat te kan wees om hi die heisen te bou nie.
And why is it important the bill talks about registering of these home builders? It's because of the problems that you are raising of unfinished projects. So if these people, they've been registered with NHPRC, therefore NHPRC would know where to find them. And the bill further provide for the penalty for those people who actually has left the work without finish. Or not reporting any structural defect on the houses.
Hi die wetzondwerp, waarom ook geen geleid word op die registratie van huisbouwers? Is juist om te verhoudt dat onvoldoede projecten geladen word en dan net gelos word. Dit is om dit aan te spreek. Zo as hi die bowers dan nou geregistreer was bij die NHPRC, zou dit verhalen mondelijk wees om hi die mensen op te spoer en anspreklik daarvoor hi die projecten wat in de half gelos het en nie voltoed nie. En daarmee sam mag hi die wet verschining vir die strafmaatreals en die bootis wat hi die persoonen mee opgedeekan word, zou hulle dan nou nie die projecte voltoed nie of zou daar enige fouten met reeds voltoede huis wees?
And the bill further provide for, even with subsidy houses that government gives to people, if the MEC responsible for human settlement and MMC of local municipality who's responsible for human settlement, if they fail to enroll these houses, they will have to be accountable as individuals because they would have failed themselves to enroll those houses to be covered by the warranty fund.
Hi die wet mag ook verschining vir gesubsidierde behoising, sebeskerming en warburgen. Zou verantwoordbare LBK nie die heisen inskrif of registreer nie? Zal daar die lid van die bestuurende commitee persoonlijk anspreklik gehoud word vir enige fouten of skade wat dan nou plaatsvind aan die struktiër omdat dit nie ingeskrif of geregistreer was? Me hi lho hori matlo, ik kan na matlo, ilho hori je adisabsidie, MMC wa lokal municipality, usikarama ikarabelo ammo kwa o matlo atama achiuakate. Ha ilho hori hamoma imon a chwanetse, usikarusha ma ikarabelo a hori o feileze bat. Hori baske bak hulle hoo, ame chalo matlo katela ening et chwanetse. Galaba gala hori hotabo hori hori hongui bilena sakwa di siwa gamo kwa o ka fat chwanelo. So that is why holle jo hori ene asikarama ikarabelo a tiro yama imon a okatase ekatzo ngi dira hetse fo. So halle hoo bana horo seno tota, vi talalo wat enke horo si relit.
And the bill further provide for the appointment of inspectorate who will monitor the building of houses in our areas. And if the inspectors fail to perform that duty, therefore they will be reliable as inspectors because they have that responsibility to protect the quality of houses, building of quality of houses.
Dan is daar ook verschining gemaak in hi die wetzondwerp vir inspectoraat. Wat verantwoordbaar is vir die monitering van hi die bouwprocess. En die inspecteer zal dan nou zelf ook persoonlijk anspreklik gehoud word en verantwoordbaar moet wees vir ene gestruktiërele defekte in swakwaliteit. As hulle dan nou nie halle plakte in dak raag uitgefur het nie. Want dit is hi mandat.
I just thought I must clarify that so that people must not repeat those issues that have been raised. Can we get other hands that want to speak? Number one, number two, number three, number four, number five. Yep, you can come and... Do we still have another hands who are closing? Three minutes rule?
Thank you very much, the panel from the human settlement. And thank you for the people that are here today. Good day. Three minutes is too little, love on alechale, but it's fine. I just summarize because people has already said everything that we had to say. But we never had such knowledge. Thank you very much. And the second thing, karatah appreciate the hori letla bele uplifted skills savanava or study the upcoming builders. We really appreciate it and you can continue with it. I think, I just, I think, or ek koe pa hori, li die other portfolio committees, li die advisor hori is a, how do you call, who is a pusho kwa tu. It's kind of like a social event. Kijtoa kumutu, kumutu om om hi le o butitou ba, koe pa hala hori is a this thing. Because if all under your, 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 your bill, first, can acknowledge a bill and can agree and fully support it. However, if there has been a damage done in five years ago or in ten years ago, is it not going to be, okay, is it not going to be catered for? Like I'm saying, I'm from Gubutito, Nojana, we are having RDP houses that have been built in nineteen ninety-nine. If there was an architect there, I don't think we'll be speaking this thing ya hori. There is a flooding near the, hola le, hua chwela. Hola le, muti, but it only can a limiti amanti, hua chwela. If there was architect, I think the architect has, didi, didi, matwa na moko position ziri kuhu dimu, orawa itinga ha, ga, 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 ga ha, kwa ha. They could have detected hori in ten years to come, there will be this thing. Now, we are sitting with hundred and eighty-five houses that were built by our municipality that are flooded.
Give, I mean, he's saying, a home warranty fund. That warranty fund is also existing or is it going to be available? For motor, or like in the motor car, the mine, the electric, the electric, the truck and the truck. Is it responsibility, a warranty fund? Or is going to be paid by the, by the mine company? My last one. I don't think, I guess sure, but I'm just going to say it. In terms of, I, I can't, I can't recall, but I read the, eh, the penalty of the contractors or the builders. We cannot do one, one, eh, one, eh, one blanket approach. Because now, like I'm saying, this is what has happened. No, yeah, on that section area. All this, eh, from, I think it's from seventy-three to seventy-seven, if I'm not mistaken. Everybody will be penalized regardless of that one point five million. I think that is unfair. If we are saying, let's go and find or detect what had happened. Or let's look at the background of, of that problem. Eh, eh, municipality, or for the contractor, the architecture, even the architect, eh, the contractors. Because of the. Even. I don't think. I guess. Eh, we're gonna build something, and next thing, it has wasted millions of rents. So all I'm asking, we really appreciate your sessions, we really appreciate this bill. And we approve, we can deny it or whatever, but eh, I think most of us like me, we have to acknowledge such bill. And we really appreciate, but let's look at the detail. Yeah, if you have a contractor or a builder, no, we need to, to focus on the defect, what has been done or the mistake. How do I build? It only happened in that area. Or it is a dilemma, you can say dilemma is something that is being, is, is, is bewitching or is. That thing is, is natural, we must expect such thing. Should it be contained in that bill? Then we'll say, we arrange the, 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 the section in terms of seventy-three to seventy-seven. Let's not use one black, one, one blanket approach, thank you.
You know, you are, you are raising important things, but you have not suggested. Because the purpose of this meeting, it's for you to strengthen the bill. And say, we propose that on class number man, man. Because it say this, we propose that, let's add one, two, three, four. That's what, why we are here. So, the, the, the bill is not cut in, is not finalized, that's why it still call a bill. We are here to listen to you, what are you saying about this bill? You can subtract, you can add, so that it can then strengthen this bill. So you have raised very important issues, but you have not actually suggested what, what is it that you must do? Go and, and submit those issues there.
Okay, chair, he spoke both languages, was code switching a lot. Um, my name is Cabalo Chohang, and I just have a feeling that giving three minutes is too little. But I won't say much because a lot has already been summarized and said by those who came before me. So I came from Kuruman, in one of the villages right here from Kuruman. Thank you very much for this session, chair. You being the, um, the Department of Home Settlement, we are very, very grateful that you are here. I have come to realize that your sessions like these actually help when it comes to upskilling, the upgrading the skills of other people, because we have gained so much knowledge that we never had before. And we are very grateful for that. I do support the bill, but one of the things that I would like to mention is this. Is that we are speaking about the warranty fund covering up to the period of some five years. What if the damage happened long maybe after ten years? Is it, is that same problem going to be catered for when it comes to the RDP houses? Is there going to be another chance that that house can actually be saved? Right now, there are some of the houses that are built in areas where a lot of water is oozing or is gushing out from underneath the ground and is causing a lot of damage. And eh, that is a problem that we obviously want to know whether this is going to be covering such like problems. Take for an example, the Department of Health, they do have a clinic also built in such eh, places where you've got, in wetlands, in other words. Literally, when you look, you can see that the, the water is oozing out from under the ground. How are they going to help such like structures? I think, is, is the bill also going to cover that kind of a thing? Now, think about the houses that are being built near the mining area. Very often, they get dilapidated, they crack, something does happen to them. Is the warranty fund the one that is going to cover those problems? Or is the mine going to be responsible for that kind of a damage? So that it can actually be covered and rectified? Um, we, we, we also feel that there is a need of information eh, that needs to be imparted to the contractors or the archi, people who are doing architectural draftsmanships. They need to know exactly where houses needs to be built. Because if they don't know, they come and put up some beautiful structures, houses, only to find that they have wasted millions of rents because it was in the wrong place that maybe houses had been built. So I do accept the bill, but under these very few conditions, thank you, chair.
Bye, thank you for your time, my name is Cabalo Chohang. Um, I live in Kuruman. Eh, I feel three minutes is actually not enough for all what I've heard, but thank you for your session, and I feel I understand the way it's worked. But I would like to hear what from house, what should here in the way it's worked, warburg funds? House, what all früher gebaut is, or jetzt bestand ist? Deck and so that work, house deck, what I'll not in your, yes, score device, or so. There is work, give it a war, house, gebaut is, eh, ob, ob areas where underground water is in the waters, score any house, yes, later, now forward, come, so that work, gedek wordt, as that of a nature like a earth shock is. A voorbeeld of that is a clinic from the Department of Health, that directly on a fly land gebouw is. With, with water and, and does now waters, score. So, so that gedek wordt, from, from which will the hope of come? And then, work, house, what in eh, mine, what around mine a gebouw wordt? Where there work, score on the house, verricht wordt, as a result of mine bu activiteiten? So the, the cost is to install or, or the wise, so up to reach, and then from the mine of come? Or so that from the warburg funds of come? And I feel more in lighting, but an architect and so forth, and bauers gegeven wordt? So that they know what the area and the topography is, so that they not the house on the very black and brown. This is a part of the important questions that I've heard. Thank you for your time. Next.
Eh, do you mind if I ask you? Then I can go to parliament, because I want to go to parliament, want to go to parliament. Now, Joseph, Joseph, my mother, I want to talk about that. How to? Eh, I want to ask you, I want to go to parliament, eh. Eh, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to, I want to separate, because I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. So I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. But I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. But I want to talk about that. So I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. 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 I want to talk about that, eh. Eh, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. No, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. CPA, it's also, it's also, it's also, eh. Eh, but it is tablo, eh, I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to, I want to, I want to meet, eh, I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. But I want to talk about that, eh. Yeah, I want to talk about that, eh. Eh, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. Yeah, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. 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 So, I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. So I want to see. CPA, eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that, eh, I want to talk about that. So I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. 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 I want to talk about that, eh.
Valuable.
Thank you.
Thank you, eh, chair, my name is Mr. Joseph. I just want to stand here and to explain the fact that we have been seeking for help for a very long time, but we haven't got any. We live, we, we, we are in need of houses, we are in need of how, housing structures. We live in checks and it's been for a very long time. So we seem to feel that if we were to be taken back to our traditional governments, that is something that perhaps could benefit us because eh, there is no developing or developments happening in our areas. Whenever there are some developments that are taking place, there is infighting, nothing is happening. We end up actually being in need of water, there is no water, there are not even toilets you can imagine. There are so many problems that you are, that you are facing. And we wish maybe you as members can come and just have a look for yourselves as to what kind of suffering are we going through? The government is not helping. I remember one time I made a call to Mr. Muthabin, eh, who is occupying some responsible position of some sort, to speak to him about the problem. But until today, nothing is happening. Now, we are of an opinion that voting does not even help. We vote annually, but we don't see any progress where we are. Years to come, we'll be expected to vote, and we must make it a point that we are not going to vote. Take us back to our traditional eh, leadership and governments. With the upcoming elections that are coming, we are not going to vote, thank you.
Bye, thank you for your time, my name is Mr. Joseph. I want not to bring on your attention that we've offered a long help from the regime before. And we don't have it, we need house, we live now in a, in a, in a city. I think actually it would be better if we can return to our traditional regimes that we've had. There is no development in the area where we live. There, so it's been, there are a lot of wars between each other. And there is no exit, we didn't have water or toilet, eh. I want actually, as a committee, in the leader, no, to come and look at the circumstances and the leading that is under us. Eh, then, I want to refer to the regime, we don't help, eh, I get all the antenor of the regime, know, they're for help, and nothing comes from them, eh. It helps us not to stem, eh. We are for the welcome to go stem, but nothing comes from them, eh. And I feel I said that the upcoming elections will not go, go stem, eh. Next.
I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that.
I want to talk about that.
I want to, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that, eh. Eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that, eh. 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 I want to talk about that, eh.
Um, Dadawa, Daddy. I want to talk about that, eh. I want to talk about that.
Allow me to greet, allow me to greet the chairperson, um, on matters that brought us here today. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, I should say that I'm impressed with, um, the documentation that is brought forward here before us. Uh, but as a matter of concern, um, I'm wondering if the government is going forth or back in these matters that are discussed in this, um, document. Well, before I forget, my name is Le Pille Ratsazi, from extension three, um, in the small village called Lepsi. Well, uh, chairperson, allow me to indicate that in twenty fifteen, on the third of June, the same government that we're facing here today came to promise us, um, these RDPs. However, even today, um, while the process was started, but unfortunately and disappointing today, what we can only see now is the foundation part of, 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 of the infrastructure. Um, it's disappointing to see that the same government that is approaching us to promise us public services, they are not even adhering to their own, uh, promises. Well, uh, chair, if you allow me to make a remark, that it appears as if we are now, um, small dogs to the same government that we are relying on to take care of us. So in the last note, chair, please, you need to reflect on yourself, do some introspections in, um, issues or matters relating to the public services, so that you can adhere to your own promises to, uh, to the community, I thank you.
Bye, thank you for your time, for your good intention. I'm impressed with your good intention, to be able to comment on your documentation. But there is a question of, come on, I, I don't know if this is what is in your document, we don't let us forward or backward. I'm from a small village here in the area of Glee. And a couple of years ago, three juniors, the regime took us to the government, we believe. But if the people are looking now where the building should be, is it not the basis, foundations of the infrastructure that we have? The regime can't do for us, love is making, eh, there, deliver, eh, there. I'm willing to give it to you, to do introspection over open-minded service, what we believe is, and not to be given. Bye, thank you. Next.
I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Meanwhile, I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, at any form of level. Eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Eh, affect that, eh, 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 eh. Me affect that, eh, 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 eh. Eh, but I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 Me want to develop, eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. Conflicted land, eh, affect that, eh, 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 eh. It's a conflicted land, eh, 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 eh. Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, the, the NB, what, 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 eh, 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 eh. And I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Me, I want to talk about that. Eh, I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, I want to follow that, eh, 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 eh. Eh, I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about the relevant qualification. I want to talk about that. I want to register that, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, I want to register that, eh, 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 eh. Eh, I want to say that, section thirty, I want to say section one, I want to say section thirty, I want to say section one, eh, section thirty-one, subsection one until subsection three. Eh, I want to, eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. 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 Eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. Me want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. 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 Eh, 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 eh.
I want to talk about that, eh, eh.
Eh, I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. I want to talk about that. Eh, 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 eh. 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 Eh, 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 eh.
Thank you.
Uh, greetings, uh, chairperson and your council. My name is, uh, Siabusi, if I pronounce it right. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, but my standing today is basically just based on questions. Um, but however, it seems like we tend to be repeating the same thing, uh, back and forth. Um, before I proceed with my question, um, there's a burning issue about the documentation that we brought forward here before us. I'm quite disappointed that we only gave this, um, discussion document on the day of the actual meeting or, uh, the discussion of today. How about you at least put an effort on unveiling this information prior to the discussion? That will help us to peruse, uh, through and, and have an understanding of what exactly is being discussed here. For now, we're just, uh, paging through the, the document without getting the gist of what it talks about. Well, uh, my first question is, uh, without wasting any time, is that, chair, how does this bill, um, actually affect, uh, uh, the tribal lands, including the CPA lands? How about those whom have taken certain portions of the land and have developed, uh, their houses in that piece of land are going to be affected by this bill? Because when, when you start, uh, to build your own house, later on, you find that, uh, what we have done in our own discretion, that's. does not, the bill does not actually accommodate you as a homeowner. The fourth question, Chairperson, as a burning matter, is the issue of developments for the youth, particularly those that are skilled but don't have qualifications. In your standing, Chair, how do you go about making sure that people that are skilled but without qualification, you empower them? Because in our community, we are so sure that the, the, the youth have skills, yet they don't have qualifications to be recognized as professional builders. Please see to it that you address such an issue. Chair, I would also like to quote section eight, subsection thirty in this document that talks about the compliance of the skilled people that suppose to be in line with the bill. Question five, Chair, it's not a question per se, but it's another matter of concern where we all know that we are all fighting for this land. And in the process of fighting for the land, municipalities, officers, including employees, are also involved or rather implicated in this process. So, I'm asking you, Chairperson, with your committee, that how do you go about populating the bills without including or involving these municipalities? Because at some point, you find that what is contained in a parliament bill is in conflict with what is contained in the municipalities. Therefore, there's a conflict of interest in the contents of your bill versus that of the municipality. So, I urge you that in future, please see to it that you involve this official of the municipality so that we don't have to struggle as the community. Chair, in the last note, I'm not sure if you're aware that there's some few developments that are happening in our midst here, in our community. I'm still asking the same question, that how do you intend to make sure that the bill that we came here today for speaks to the, to the, to the developments? Because we have in conflicts with officials and we ask that, officials from municipality, then we humbly ask that you intervene to make sure that all these processes are followed correctly and there's coherent, coherent of information. Thank you, Chair.
Danki voorstevers, voor die geleentheid. My name is Siabusi. Maar ik het een paar vraag wat ik kan i volstellen. Ik weet dat het blijkt dat ons zelf verhaal. Maar met jullie document wat voor ons is, is vandaag, ja, zijn ons weer handig. Hoe kon ons dit niet voorafgekrijgt? Hoe kon ons die toegang krijgen door het voorheen? Zodat ons meer tijd kon hebben om dit er te lezen en te verstaan. Maar dan wil ik ook eerst eens een kwestie raak van traditionele grond. Hoe gaat dit beïnvloed voor die reedie wetzondwerp? En wat zal gebeuren als een mens bijvoorbeeld op jullie type grond een huis bouw? Maar weet, ons is niet bewust van hoe ons geraak kan worden, zowel onze huis op een van jullie traditionele eindomen bouwen. En zal dit ook dan bescheren voor die reedie wetzondwerp? Dan, de tweede kwestie is jev, wat vaardigereet, maar niet qualifikatie stelt niet. Hoe kan de mens helle bemachtig en hoe kan ie helpen om dit aan te spreken? En verwijst ik naar artikel 18, artikel 30, voor die nakoming van vaardigeren en hoe dit moet beleen worden met die reedie wetzondwerp. Ons heeft ook baaien conflict in jullie, in jullie gemeenschap waar daar een conflict van belang ook is tussen die municipaliteit en die bouwers en dit voortdurend ook problemen zo kan. Die reedie wetzondwerp geimplementeer wordt zonder dat die hier die municipaliteiten in zo betrokken raak en hier die conflict van belang plaatsvindt. Dit is kwesties wat voor mij brandpinte is, wat ik graag wilde, ie kan, voor ons moet anspreken als ze blijven. Ba.
Santlaki arataho, kholleboja mo dlosstulo le ba tama le ne. Na genamutusi ki, bosejukasefani, katu lo kito akoo, kudita akoo, komoteselehaya, kowet twelve, shadrak mo tsawo le. Nan thazakari taroe hela hadidi nintiyalo yalu. Kilela hela ka, kura hakikono talo kanya kora, apalamente ki one etam meisanyalo oro huira gala. Santlaki la ka residentiali, na yakaki le, kiliku komoteselehaya. Na residentielero na, hakajoku kiliku kudita akung, nedi keda kudera se weme, mo, mo bukuruman. Empara kela la mo koregi info, nu like marketing, ha yekhoni. Sosakotla homaketa mu, maybe mo buka, tu buka, kame di maydi nsi di kafaze. Kedla kona mo buhmuti visdata, kedla kona mo buka, yekha, yekore, kiko honne ki, 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 bakonbanze siras. Sa wobe ediki, ko, komotingeselehaya war na wa di takung. Ki kore di taku ki mo tsomoton, ene kote ngokodera gala du, sidi, sidi ma se tata. Mara motating, harana, harana Playstation, harata la Playstation kuah, ko placinge enya, ne kubutitu. Ukara la, maybe kenale probleme, ki tani leki yekho report. Ki sabalo kotsama, because, kohakala, moto kana kompohta kahon kane na, wat talo kha. Ene li health ya, ya kudita akung, ena li unikile nisanyana, hakitsukore diang. Because, klinika kogorona, haya na nakoyala e maleba yayo. Kona kora kote ngoli, wizuore, okinno, ibula ka half past eighty. Ha wote na kote ng, ha wote na kedi, kozua iluka ta, kona mezi. Ka na kose wa, bobola, wat talo kha. So, ki nozolo kore, maybe hadi, we landa nyana ba, ki bato kina nyana espa lamente kore, wizuore ma tata arna lo kudita akung, kia fi, kjalleboja.
Chairperson, greetings. My name is Shadrak. I'm gonna try to be as short as possible. I only have three points today. So, without wasting any further time, I'm standing here actually confused, not knowing if this whole inconvenience that we're facing as the residents of Di Takong, as the responsibility of the government or not. Because in my case, for example, the only time that I will have access to this town that you are in now, perhaps it will, it will only be in a manner where I should perhaps drive or take a local taxi to just come by a simple phone. Well, let me bring this to your attention, Chairperson and to your cabinet. The issue of security in Di Takong as a small village on matters pertaining to security and safety. It's so disappointing to see that Di Takong itself doesn't even have a mere police station. You can imagine, if one has to report any criminal activities within Di Takong, has to walk a mile just to report that. It's a matter of security for concern for myself. I think about it, one can actually be assaulted or whatever the case in the process of reporting crime. Well, the third point, which is in relation with the health issues in Di Takong, is that the clinic, allow me to quote and to indicate to you that a mere clinic is not even consistent with their services. Because what we see there is just so unprofessional, poor service, particularly on matters relating to their timings. You know, imagine just you, you, you are actually not feeling alright or well then you consult, you find that the clinic closed. And in that situation, you'll be stranded and desperate to be helped in, in that regard. More especially when you come to water. As you all know, that water is a basic need. But allow me, Chair, to say that it's disappointing for a mere clinic not to even have services such as water for that matter. So, I deploy a huge, Chair, to please look into this issue that I brought before you. Thank you.
Ba danki voorstevers, voor die geleentheid, en ik groet en die kommenteren. Ik is wel verwarred, waar ik een paar kwesties, ik wil weet waar jullie huis is. Wie wie uiteindelijk voor dit zal verantwoordelijk zijn? Kwesties wat ik ook wil noemen is, in mijn gebied waar ik woon, in Lethabong, heeft ons securiteitskwesties. Ons heeft niet eerst ons eigen politiestad zijn. En zul je mistad plaatsvindt in een mens met loop om dit te gaan anmelden, kan de mens nog in die proces ook angerand worden, in leert angedoen worden. Een andere kwestie is gezondheidsdiensten. Ons zet de kliniek, maar die kliniek is niet consequent in hoe hun diensten leveren. Dat is baai unprofessioneel hoe die personeel optreed. Laaste kwestie is water, in die toegang daartoe, wat ons niet, niet. Dit is mij werkelijk te leer stellen, dat ons niet eerst basisdingen zoals water kan hebben. Ik wil je graag aanmoedigen om jullie kwesties wat ik geopereerd ook aan te spreken.
Thank you very much. We, we want to take this opportunity to thank you for the inputs that you have made.
Re bataholeleboja, tata bakasoreleleboja la, di troylo, se li di di relé.
Ba danki, ons wil je graag bedankt voor ie insal wat ie gedeed werd vandaag.
Amongst as we have joined by the representative of the NHPRC, I'm going to allow them to talk to some of the critical issues that you have raised on the bill because they are the people that are going to implement the bill.
Honale, ba emedi bango, baba lingfano, ba NHPRC, ba eno khorbanse, ba redize. Dia nom, retlo koh, ba kopa khorbanse, ama foka ama bidi, ama raro kalabakala, kore, ki bonda ba. Baba klingo, tanyama lakshmo, oni di riso.
Ie tussen ons zit de verteenwoordiger van die NHPRC af. Jullie mensen gaan verantwoordelijk zijn voor de implementering van jullie wetgeving.
And we have representative of the department, the one that have written this bill, they will actually answer some of the questions that you have asked on the issue of land, how is good, how does the land, how does the bill affect the, the, the rural areas, the issues of PTOs, the issues of CPAs, and developmental, development in general as these houses will be built. I'm going to give them opportunity to respond to those issues. Can start with the NHPRC and follow by the department. Thanks.
So, honale, ba emedi baba kape, baba songole fa peng, ba leboner klingo kopa khoraba buwe. Kadi troya di zilu di kharisenta kore, mola kamo oni war na o amadang, ma fatse, o amadang, ma koh. Le koro, o amadang di karre di troya nali tameteselehaya, di CPAI. Ne leha ku kisuat khabololo, mo tikulolo konyaro na, batlar khaluset.
So, you, you should look, yeah, you must face the people.
Ons zit ook verteenwoordiger, zit zo vanaf die departement, desse mensen wat die reedie wetzondwerp geschriften. Nu jullie mensen gaan vraag antwoord wat ie gehad het van grond, hoe jullie wetzondwerp landelijke areas gaan afeert, hoe die GP4 afeert wordt, in ontwikkeling over die algemeen. Kom ons begin met die NHPRC.
You should indicate your name and where people can find your offices, where you operate from here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, community members. Chairperson, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Goedemiddag aan allemaal, ie tenwoordig. Ik wil zei ba danki voor die geleentheid wat ik ik kan zijn. En goeie middag aan die voorstevers.
Kjalleboja tata mo dlosstulo, ridumedi savoto, motapa meng, ene ya hompiene, ridumela, chone, ene e, meki, kismula, fela, kahu du medisa.
My name is Ezekir Mshongo from the NHPRC.
Meneer is meneer Mshongo, en akom van die NHPRC af.
Na ke remshongo, kisako NHPRC?
Chairperson, this area of Guruman, we don't have a physical office of the NHPRC at the moment.
Mole filo lele, lerle mo kolo, ne mo dlosstulo, ta, ta harana, officia matoh, ta ekhomiloe nya NHPRC.
In jullie area van Guruman, het ons stands niet gefestigde kantoor van die NHPRC niet.
Having said that, we, we do have a footprint by way of inspectors which are assigned to be on the side of this area of Guruman and other official, our marketing team, who always are part of this community for any queries which our builders or consumers do have.
Me konsu konsu dialo mo dlosstulo renali, batobaye ele ba ebidi ba rona, baba dira mo tiru, mo tikulolo keni ya rona, ba ele kore. Tiro ya bo neki, kujwa, di gongore koh, sa ba tello kudi araba, le ba officiri ba ba, ngoba o ba, dirang, tiro e chana le abona, ele kore. Di kete bo, di pefa na zedilinte, di kete di kono kono lewa, koko melo e kokeha.
Ons zit ook inspecteren in die area, wat die, in jullie area werk, in die plaslike gemeenschap, ons zit ook amtenore, wat enige vraag kan antwoord, wat bouwers of zelfs verbreker zijn voor alle.
So, we, we are working very hard to ensure that we have a representative which can be based in our local municipality so that they can be housed there as and when there's queries. Our stakeholders can able to access that particular official.
Kajalusir, klingo kusidira, retlo koh, aha, mm, koe, ele kore, etla namu karolong, ngo ya, maspala waselehaya. Ele kore, etla ra ha, honali, di lozidi koka, elwa koko. Banalisa be barona, ele di stakeholders, sa ba ta bakhonoho ya kohoyo, ne kohi krisa kohyo ne, ele kore. Kui tiru, twuzu e ba koka.
Ons werk ook ba hardo aan om te verschikkeren dat de verteenwoordiger in die plaslike municipaliteit is. Jullie persoon zal dan, of die belanghebbend is, zal dan toegang hebben tot jullie verteenwoordiger.
There was the first speaker, I think, from this side this morning talking about fraud of a certificate of NHPRC. So, I would like to make it very clear that the NHPRC certificate, registration certificate is not on sale, it's not accessible by way of fraud. There's a process which a builder has to go through.
Huila kha krisu, akosakamalakakurereka, fano, monga abosaka certificates, NHPRC, momesong onu. Me ki bata kola, khaluset, di koha fela kore, honali certificate is esenzenjalo, khasaselo, sosu, bonabonambo, nolo fela. Honali, tula kanya, esenzenjalo, kola tele, kora, mo tiyo, na le mo ahi, akonok fela tara, analyste, certificate is esenzenjalo.
Acten die eerste vraag die van jullie kant afgekom en los verwijst in gemok na een NHPRC registratiecertificaten wat angekoop kan worden. Ons wil voor ie zeggen, jullie certificaten kan niet angekoop worden, dit moet verwaar worden. Dat is niet bedroeg wat plaatsvindt om je niet. En dat is een proces waar die mensen moeten er gaan om jullie certificaten te verwaar.
So, on that note, we request you as community members, as responsible citizens, if you are aware about someone who's committing fraud, about the certificate, because these are the builders who are not completing the structures and at the end, we have problems like what you have raised here. So, you are actually going to be directed, there is a table outside there. We do have a toll number for the NHPRC, it's a hotline for fraud. You, you please help us and report whatever, some fraud which are committed by some of our official or even community members regarding our, our processes.
Kajalusir, retlo koko paro, na maloka, asochaba, yakahalo nsejana, kore. Halu le mo kha kosa, Louisi kadilo dingwi, sedi amanali di tiru di, sa bo ferefer. Sedi le kori amanali, sona di tivi di, sedi troya nali, seno sen. Honali ba, tobaloka, buan lebona, batobaba troya nali di wardcouncillor, kadi tiru sedi nzenjalo, ele kori di kono koe, elwa koko. Le kona jano jana, naletafolana kafandeya, batobaho kabiwan lebona, akonali, songso si, tinso karatang, josebeha, ekola kanya leboni.
Ons verzoek ook van ie, als de gemeenschap, als mensen wat belanghebt en voor ons mensen, als ie weet van iemand wat bedroegpleeg met jullie registratiecertificaten. Of, of, en jullie mensen wat jullie bedroegpleeg is gewoonlijk die bouwers, wat niet haar is klaabouw. Zo kan ie als ze blijven naar die tofo ie beiter toe gaan, ons verteenwoordiger zit ie beiter. Ons zit zelfs een tovriae nummer wat ie kan. ons zit zelfs een tovvrije nummer wat ie kan bouwen en mensen kan hier die bedroeg rapporteren dus zo. Van amtenore ons eigen mensen of zelfs bauwers wat ie weet wat hier die bedroegpleeg.
NHBRC is heel passief om omhoog te maken met de builders, speciaal vrouwen. We do have programs which are in place and the program which the dates and time are outside, our colleagues outside will able to indicate which dates are available for those training. But the point we are trying to make is that we are very much passionate that all people who are interested in building, especially women, programs are there which are available for free that NHBRC is rolling out to all the community members.
De NHBRC is ook passief voor om ontleijkende bauwers en vooral vrouwen te bevorderen en te bemachtigen. Ons zegt van hier die bemachtigingsprogramma wat ons zegt, ik kan ie bijte bij die tof hoe die dat is voor die programma krijgen. En ons is passief voor, ons wil allemaal moeten bouwen, ons wil voor alle vrouwen moeten bouwen. Zodat ons verschafft hier die gratis programma aan ontleijkende bauwers.
There was a machine of warranty fund as to how to access warranty fund and all those things. So the warranty fund can only be accessible if builders are registered with NHBRC and all homes which are being constructed by them are enrolled with us. That's where we can able to enjoy the benefit of the warranty fund.
Dat is ook een vraag, een vraag over die waarborg fonds en wat het paals. Maar en hoe een mens toegang krijgt tot die fonds. Die enigste manier hoe een mens toegang krijgt tot die fonds is als die bauer geregistreerd is bij de NHBRC, als ook dat die gebouw wat gebouw wordt ingeschreven is. En dit is voor mensen te hanken tot die fonds.
Chez person, we do have currently a committee of council of DC of the NHBRC that responsible for disciplinary all home builders which are conducting themselves in a particular manner where they just leave construction, not completing. There is a committee in place which is responsible for those type of builder, but only those who are registered with the NHBRC.
Ons zit ook een disciplinair committie wat hier die swakbouwers vervolgt. Dat is nou bauwers wat de project halfel toe in wegloop, maar in hier die committie is verantwoordelijk voor helaan. Maar helaan kan niet verantwoordelijk gaan worden hier die komiteer als helaan geregistreerd is.
So all these builders who are registered with us, there is a conduct which we expect from them. But if a home builder is building somewhere which we don't know them, we don't have jurisdiction on them. So it's up to you as members of the public to let us know that there's a builders which are building houses somewhere and you suspect they are not registered with us. And then they would take steps against them. Because no one is allowed to build a house in Sarajevo in terms of the law if it's not registered as a builder.
Alle bauwers wat geregistreerd is bij ons moeten gedraag scoren volg. Maar als dat een heisbauer is wat hier geregistreerd is niet, kan ons helaan niet vervolgen niet. Ons kan niks aan helaan doen niet. Dus voor ons ie is die gemeenschap om ons in te leggen als ie gloeert dat iemand niet een geregistreerde bauer is niet. Niemand mag zonder helaan geregistreerd als bauwer, dat is de enige wet.
So I will urge you community that the department is bringing a bill which actually it will be progressive. The current bill is got some limitation. The only time that you can claim from the warranty fund in terms of the structure is five years. And then the roof leak is 12 months. But the bill now have changed that regime, it's now progressive in terms of protecting you as a housing consumers.
Ik vraag nu voor ie als die verbrijker en ik vraag voor ie om deel te nemen. Dank je voor die deel nummer van die departement mensen wetzondwaar loop voor wat ons naar die toekomst doet. Tans is dat beperking op die wetgeving, dat is niet vijf jaar woord wordt obstructeren, twaalf monden aan daglaken, maar nou wordt ie als verbrijker bescheren.
So on that, I will say, I've listened to some of members of the public raising concern about their unfinished DPOs. Currently, we've got some limitations in terms of accountability. Because, just an example, some of the projects in Kouding which we try to interdict because they are not enrolled, the MEC or MMC, they are not coming to us to assist us. With this current bill which we are dealing with now, it's going to address the issues of the involvement of MMC's, MEC, to help us to ensure that all subsidy projects are enrolled accordingly and builders are registered with NHBRC so that protection can be there for the consumers. So as and when there's structural defects on those RDP houses, the NHBRC will step in the shoes of the all the builders who are not able to rectify those houses.
Dank je heel erg, ja.
My time is up, chair.
Ja.
I thought, okay, well, thank you very much.
You can finalize a minute and then finalize those issues.
Okay.
No, no, you can do it in a minute, finalize some of the issues so that...
Ons zit gelijsternaan ie bekommernissen over hier onvoldoende opwezen. Heidiglijk oftans is ons ansprekkelijkheid de park. Een voorbeeld, een gauw ting heeft onze projecten of onze subiertoing ingrijp, maar die alia of die albiakor help ons niet eindelijk niet. Nu met hier die nieuwe wetzondwaar gaan ons moeten hier die mensen forsieren om ons te helpen. Die alia en die albiakor, dat moet betrokken raken. En verzekeren we is dat die hijse ingeschreven is en dat die bauer geregistreerd is. En als dat fout gaat met die hijse, in die bauer kan het niet zelf vraaggesteld niet. Soms die NHBRC intreedt en hier de draag zelf besteld.
Okay, the last point, I think this is important, chair. There was a complaint that there were structures which are built that dolomite and all those things. So what is important here? As soon as a plan is there for the construction of subsidy homes, the NHBRC is very interested to understand what is the soil type so that we can advise the builders what type of foundation they can use so that those houses mustn't collapse. So those houses which are built on those dolomite areas, those are the houses for two years down the line, they've got problem. So we are there to able to assist our engineer to say this type of soil requires what type of foundation so that the builders mustn't cut corners, they must get advice accordingly. Thank you very much.
Dat was ook een kracht over die structieren wat op dolomit gebouw is. Nou, als daar een plan is om subsidies hijse te bouwen en is op een dolomitachtige area, dan stelde NHBRC belang, want helaan staat belang in die kwaliteit van die grond. Want dit is hijse wat op hier die areas gebouw wordt wat later aan problemen geeft. Over twee jaar verstoor hijse en een. Zo als dat hijse op dolomitachtige area gebouw wordt, gaan ons ingenieurs uit gaan, helaan gaan komen op een advies en ratig geven hoe meer hijse gepastelijk te bouwen. Boei dankje.
Dank je, mister Salolo, twee minuten.
Meneer heeft twee minuten?
Thank you very much, chez person. Good afternoon to the honorable members. Good afternoon to the public at large. My name is Pito and my surname is Salolo. I work for the National Department of Human Settlements in the legal services.
Boei dankje, goede middag en boei dankje dat ik hier kan doen. En gruw die allemaal, mijn naam is Pito Salolo en ik waar kom van de departement mensen in hier de seting af.
Most importantly, chair, I need to inform the public that this bill applies to any land in the country.
Ik is hier zo om ie allemaal in te leggen dat hier die wetzondwaar van toepassing is op alle grond in die land.
It applies to any builder and any home.
Dat is van toepassing op enige bauer en enige hijse.
However, we have noted that in rural areas or in villages, owners or builders are not registered and the homes are not enrolled.
Ons zit ook achtergekomen dat in landelijke areas of in klein dorpies is die bauwers of hijse, hijsbauwers niet geregistreerd niet en die hijse wordt niet ingeschreven om gebouwd te worden niet.
So in order for you to benefit from the services of the NHBRC, it is important that when you want to construct a home, have your home enrolled and constructed by a registered builder.
Dit is zo omdat belangrijk is het wanneer ie hijse bouwen moet ie verzekeren dat ie hijse ingeschreven is en dat die bauer geregistreerd is bij de NHBRC.
Now, most importantly ladies and gentlemen, the minister in terms of this bill has bestowed the responsibility on the MEC responsible for housing as well as the MMC to ensure that each and every project that is given to a contractor must be enrolled. So it is you are right as members of the community to ensure that once you see boots hitting the ground, when you see people starting to construct houses, you go to them and ask for proof that the project is enrolled.
Die minister heeft ook die placht over die bewijslast gezet op die alia en die albiakors van beheizings zodat om te verzekeren dat ons die projecten ingeschreven wordt. Het is ie raar om als te zien als iemand begint bouwen kan ie helaan gaan vraag over hijse ingeschreven is om te bouwen.
Now, I'm saying to you, my good sir, who asked about the project that is commencing somewhere nearby, to go, go there, go to them, ask if the project is enrolled. If it is not enrolled, you can report them to the NHBRC, it is you are right. Thank you very much, chair.
Dat is ook iemand dat verwijst naar een project in nabij wat ie gezien hebt plaatsvindt. En het is ie raar om te gaan vragen of die project ingeschreven is. En als die project niet ingeschreven is niet, dan moet ie als ze blieft helaan rapporteren aan die NHBRC.
Dank je heel erg, mister Salolo en mister Ezekiel voor de input.
Boei dankje, aan die twee meneer er voor helaan.
There are two things that we should respond to as a portfolio committee.
Dat is twee dingen wat ons supportivele committie moet anspreken.
Just to indicate that there are a lot of things that does not belongs to human settlement. We have registered them, we are going to take them to the relevant authorities for them to attend to.
Eerstens wil ons een zeggen dat is boei kwesties wat geopereerd is wat niet verwant is aan mensen in hier de seting niet. Maar die kwesties wat in die tof personeel toe geneemd is, zal dan verwijst worden aan die relevante mensen.
The important thing that was raised was on the unfinished project, which we call it blocked project. And the minister had come to parliament, made commitment that as a department they are going to unblock this project and they've started this financial year, they will end it in three years. All the unfinished projects, they are going to visit them and make sure that they get finished.
Dat is ook verwijzing gemaakt van een project wat gestopt is. Nou, hier die projecten verwijzen ons dan als geblokkeerde projecten. Nou, die minister heeft het toe wijdring gemaakt aan ons om te zeggen hier die projecten zal weer aan die gaan komen en het zal binnen drie jaar voor twee worden. Dat is ook een belofte gemaakt dat al hier die projecten zal bezoek worden en verzekeren wordt dat het voor twee wordt.
The committee on Wednesday, we have met with the MEC responsible for housing from Northern Cape, Northwest and Western Cape. And we had called... En we hebben ze gevraagd om ons te brieven over hun programma om deze project onblokken en te eradicate madhuizen, ze hebben vertraging gemaakt voor dat, en te verwijzen, te eradicate de huizen die worden ruift door asbestos. En ze hebben ons een programma gegeven dat ze gaan implementeren, startend van deze financiële jaren.
Bibile hapere, rileran na le kopano, irneri tshurele MEC, wa Noordwest, Noordkape, le Westkape, mo re ba kopano ho re barbonse, programma, ba tlo ho beraka kayo na ya ho dira, ya ho onblokka di projecte, se ne se le ho re khadiya fele. Li ho re hapere, barinale programma ya ho re, ba tlo ho tro samako, ah, achhi wa ka di asbestos. Katalo he, katalo pele ya diro, le ho re ba tlo ho tse nyalink di resom programma ya ho dira di lo tseeno. Oh, die comité het ook woensdag met die Alia Rne van bijings van die Noordkap, Noordwest, en die Weskap bij elkaar gekomen. Dat is ons ingelicht wordt programma, hoe helen hier die blokkastjes gaan dan raag staan. En ook hoe gaan helen als bez in moder heise wegmaak. Hela het het programma verschaf, wat helen hier die boekjaren reet zal mee beginnen.
En het is de responsabiliteit van dit portfolio comité dat wanneer de departement komt tot parlement op een kwartale basis, we ze vragen over de vertraging die ze hebben gemaakt, en dit is wat we gaan doen.
Ka jalo, bi karabele baruna jaka portfolio comité, ho re halifapale, tlako parlementing. Re ba botza di pozo pozo, se di ntsenyana, ho re baro bolela, ho re sentente, ba zamaha ka e programma ya bonaya, re, ki bi karabele baruna jo, jo rubudira, ka jalo ki ser tlen ho si dira. Het is ook i verantwoordelijkheid van hier die comité, wanneer die departement naar die parlement toe komt, om vooral te vooral en terugvoer te krijgen, waar die tuwijding met helen gemak is. En dit is velen wat, wanneer dit gedoeen zal worden.
Er was de issue van de mensen registreren huizen voor een lange tijd, en minister is nog eens gekomen tot parlement en heeft vertraging gemaakt dat ze realiseren dat er een uitdaging is in termen van registreren van beneficiërs in gemeenschappen. Dus ze gaan de beneficiërs digitiseren zodat kanzellen, als ze komen en gaan, ze hebben geen kans om de lijst te veranderen, want de uitdaging die werd ontdekt is dat wanneer kanzeller B komt, schrijft de lijst, wanneer hij de nieuwe schrijft, vergeet die lijst, start een ander proces. En gemeenschappen, je ziet dat ze niet informeerd zijn dat de lijst, ze starten het proces vanaf het begin. Dus mensen, de lijst heeft geen consistentie. Dus minister heeft deze financiële jaren budget gegeven om de beneficiërs digitiseren om te zorgen dat het proces transparant wordt en mensen informeerd zijn over de lijst zelf.
Nka ewe ere batla ho re ya la chokofanu fa, eritumela nyana ke ho re tona hapere ile ya buisana, lo na ka khanya khui kuadisa ta ba cho. Ba taba fe salo ba kalelele telebe kuadisi di di se ma cho. Jano, si si dira kan ke ho re, ho na li di uitdaging se ba di bole, jano, minister ra wila abua are, sabaiso ya ho kuadisiwa, haba taba ikhoi di se ta ma cho. Ba batla ho re, ene ya digital. Ka manzaman era ha, mo kanzeller re yo mo ngal za ma ya, ho se na yo mu yo moncha. Es kan na ho re yo moncha usimula diro ho tohakha, hapere kuadisiwa, bocha hapere, ene na khanya ho re le na ne lelelelelelelele, ba taba ikhoi di se tseng. Lo na galiphumo he, le zo la pele ka di na ko zo tso tlim. Kajaloh, seno setla dira kore, opa aseka, a, 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 atshenyatshenyana, lila ne o, la ba tobaba sa temba i koi disedi te maato.
Does oke verwaisen gemak van mense wat lango geregister is, um eis it onfang. Sorry. And the minister ite tuwaring gemak um te say that is aidagings wat arvor wort and that herei staal sal nau gedigital sal plasfin. That herei beginsdige te lies, digital opse ni opgeneem sal wort. When, whener a radsit inkom, wo da a lies opgestal. Ni radsit wort vervang, and as it a niwe lies, 1, 1, 1, 1 farther. So herei mense wo ni ingelig, herei lies vaaner ni. So that, um, it uns nau herei digitale staal so vor begrudet in i bukjar, salda dan bierschachtigai for uns veskaf.
She further made commitment that they have agreed with MECs responsible for human settlement that the beneficiary list must prioritize childhooded families, elderly people and people with disability.
Me bile hapere, wila atlalosa tona kore, ba tobabi elen koro ba kwadi se di tue maato ano a, mo le na ne wonglew. Roshanetsu kore, re etelese kopili, ba tobabi elen bana, ba khudi, le ba tobaba tlanka bohola.
Sait oke tuwaring gemak um te say that sait medhi aliaru wat verantwortlik is verwaising, were ingekon, that herei lies, kinderhufdige heishoudings, aware persone, in mense mit gestremdeere, vor sal plas.
So the issue of the title deed for rural people, rural, the land for rural people belongs to the community and the traditional leaders. And therefore, you get the PTO, not a title deed.
Jano, haratla mo kanya ya di title deed, ko, mister selahayeng. Ma fatse hoza di taze maato, aime mochoto one, eh, le fatse leo to takela, ba etele di pele ba sezo. Kamantzama ke, le fatse la bona, kajaloh, ha one we title deed, onewa, le kualo la tumela lo ya kona, monkun ewo na mochoyona.
Then di Tito Act is for the landlike areas. Now, the gronde landlike in herei areas bewirt oni gemeenskap inhi traditionelle layers. I gan ni a Tito Act onfang ni, ma i gan a brief krai wat i raage om da te woen.
I repeat, the land in the rural areas belongs to the traditional leader and the people. Therefore, the traditional leader hold the land on behalf of the people. It's a responsibility of that community to agree themselves, whether they continue with the PTOs or they want to give people title deeds.
Kajalohera kore, eh, le fatse komitee ya selahayeng, eh, ki la, ba etele di pele ba sezo, mochale ba tobaba na mocholone. Kajalohera, ba tobaba tshane kore bona, ba di re tshwezo, ya kore, a, eh, kona li tumalan, mochara bo one. Ya kore, a, ba batla kotsuela la, kadi PTO, hoza, a, ba tla ba tla kore bona, ba neli di title deeds.
We're ens gana claim no oplei that the landlike areas bewirt oni traditionelle layers inhi mense voni gemeenskap. I gan ni a Tito Act onfang ni. Di traditionelle layers bau di grond namens di gemeenskap. Dakune beslight geneem wort, ofi wek di gemeenskap so wek voortgaan and ofi le eder Tito Act is wolle.
But in areas where the title deed, where the house, the land belongs to government, the title deeds are given, it's a program that the department is involved, it's implementing on daily basis.
Kajalohera, koma fatse in alen koro mocholone, le fatse jano, ki la puso, eh, di tula kadi di title deed eteng, koya kadi programe, te di komilwen, sa hunsiwa kazona.
In areas where di grond oni regering bewirt, wo da Tito Act is vege, gege. And herei is a program where i department daagliks uitvoer.
The last thing is on the visibility of the NHPRC. We have noticed that the NHPRC does not have an office around Northern Cape. Therefore, as a portfolio committee, we'll engage the minister and make sure that there is a office in Northern Cape so that the people and builders in Northern Cape, they are able to go and register without hindrances.
Kajalohaper, koko mister rona jaka portfolio committee, kore, eh, NHPRC, haena ofisi mo, monnorin cape. Kajaloh, seriklo kosi dira. Reba tlako, kola kanya le ministera, adira kore, kona li tula kanya kore, kona lo ofisi monnorin cape. Ofisi elen kore, ba to, mocholi, ba tobaba elen ba ahi, ba kakona koya koho, yonakoya kui kwa di sa.
Lastens, is the di sikhbarai van i NHPRC. And si's bewistovan that ele ni a kantuere inhi noertkaup et ni. And oso medhi minister ingesprak tri da wort, that a kantuere herein, ofi a kantuere gestig sal wort. This sorti bauers inhi verbreikers, dorin kan gaan and that ele soner enega moite kan geregister.
So as I've indicated, there are other issues that belongs to other portfolio committees, which will take them to those relevant portfolio committees, including the issue that was raised by the first speaker on making sure that mining companies, they consider the future of the towns and they must play there. Because in terms of the law, they have a responsibility to develop communities where they mine. We will take the matter with the portfolio committee on minerals in parliament.
Jano hapere, lera atlalosa koro, hunile di tshwaleze, di goze elen kore, ke tadi portfolio committee te di, wey, se ilen kore, ratadi taya, rebe redi fiti sasa kodi portfolio committee te di ntsenjalo. Kasika, i jaka si buisantlasene si bua momosong onu, mongona bua, abua ka di mining companies. Ona atlalosa fanu fa kore, eh, reba tlakobo, ela koko kore, di company te di ntsenjalo, di tshane kore, di dira di lo koya ka melao. Ya kobe sa kore, banali responsibility, kaha, di toro potse, illo kore di mining zabo ni di baraka, mochara kazona, ba di develop, beka di nakoto tling. Kajaloh, momboe, mojobo tshwana li jo, ha ni ewe etai siwa, kwa le fapa la, edi minerali, edi tompe. Kora ba ya khuda, tshwale ewe, illo kore baraka naleo.
What uns vroer angedai is da ander kuisis wat van to passing is op ander portefilia komitees. So is, di erstesunet geprad, where di mine maat ke paye, wat os muti sekere makat ele di tokomse vani dorp, wat omligend is in agnem. And that ele verantwortlikai et oni gemeenskape. And oso herei kuisi oni department von minerals so ke wergye.
I've just mentioned the issue of the mining. There are a lot of things that we have raised, even with youth development, will take all those issues to relevant portfolios so that they can then start to attend to them.
So, ki ne ki dira seka i fe la, ha ki buaka kanya di mine, kona li ma chata man amainse alo a chakisite. So jaka ha ke tshalu sitse, ni kla se wa di siwe ho, di portfolio committee sa zona, illo kore, bona ba developedi lo koya ka mochoba tshane kaka.
Does ba kuisis, verskeline kuisis geoper, and sals wat di yege ontwikelin. Uns sal herei ansprek for ani nori gekomitee.
With that note, we want to thank you for having avail yourself and participate in this public hearing. Indeed, your views will be incorporated and strengthen this bill going forward.
Kajalohera, ba tlakolo labo kala kobo lilo la, tlafanu fa, lo kore za karolo ya konsa di tshwale zalona. Selisi diri len, setla dira kore di tshwale zalona, di tse wey, di tse yele di wey moteha lama laka mu, ho nunu cha. Kore, otlo, kono kudi ra kateela.
Here me willonsi bedank that i bei delgeneem eten bei uns vandagwas. Uns vole oke fi i say that i sineng sal deo forem van herei wezont war, om de te verstak.
And I must indicate that there was an issue that people has not received the information prior to this meeting. It's not correct. I've indicated when we started that we have sent our team on the ground to educate people about this bill. And the bill was publicized on the newspapers prior to these public hearings.
Jano, monguile atshwala kora kalo, bona teiri museto, hosantana kona le nako. Ki ba tlakolo, tshaneseta kore, se oka se buammaruri. Kalabakala, la kore, re tshalu sitse kore, rilera romela suklapasarona, timiarona, kota koo buisa na leba, ahi pele rona reta. Eh, ba ileba, taba tshaba buisa na lelo na. Kajalohere, nklai ewo buiwa kane ewo ha e buammaruri ba gaetsu.
Does oke vroer ge say that di mense ni ingelig was or herei vergadering ofi wezont war ni. And ak wort it nau stal that it is ni kurikni. Uns it omspan voor uitgestier, ons it waarkwinkels hau, herei wezont war pesen i korant gepubliceer. So do, is genoog inagdan gege, andhi mense is wal ingelig.
Again, this is not the end of the process. After we have finalized the public hearings throughout the country, as a committee, we are going to discuss the bill itself and table our report to parliament. And then after parliament adopted the report, this bill will be taken to the other House of Parliament called the NCOP. And the NCOP too, they are still going to come back to people and do the same process until they finalize the public hearings. And then they will then discuss it too. And then, then the bill will then be, become an act of parliament, which will then be enacted and signed off by the president.
Jano, elan koko kore, ita ra haris, hasi bukhuto ba kopano ino ya runaba gaetsu. Ita ra haris, estere zamilema felo ocha, rebe reya kona fa fatse rona jaka committee, reto tla kama laka mu onu. Ita ra haris, na kona ru tso, rebe ru romela, reporto ya rona, ko parliamenting. And then parliamente one, ita be romela, hei, snakotla kaya one, ba tla be ba romela tshwezo ya bona, ko, ho ewo ya diincho sa parliamente, ilen NCOP. Me NCOP leo one, ita be ela tele la, tula kanya eh tshwana li, eh, renzere tshwara kane leo one, ya koto taka, lama laka mu onu. Me habas, na ho finalize sa di tshwale zating. Ba tla be jano, ba ta, bele ino eh, ba idira kore jano, inne molao. Oe ilen kore, komo ra konyana, parliamente, ita o saena, kore inne molao. In fact, ita be isainiwa ke presidenta kore inne molao.
Uns vletwe say, herei is ni di ende vani partner. Now that all herei opmorave vergaderings hau wort, sal ons se komitee be mekaar kom, ons sal herei wezont war besprek. And so dan ter tafu gele wort inhi parliament. That so dan we wege wort inhi parliament. And dan anhi, anhi ander heis, di NRVP gestier wort. Ele sal da ni safti proces ter gmas wat uns gehat et om herei opmorave vergaderings tau. And dan, sal herei wezont war, inhi weet varander and it sal get onerteken wort di herei president.
An NCOP is the House that consists of a permanent delegate and legislatures of provinces and representative of councils, which it's alga.
Jano he, NCOP, kamantzama nyana, inale ba, emedi ba, elen kore ki baliruri. Baba baraka mochione, mochale ma fapa, a kota to molao. A ina nale ba, emedi mochione. Kajalohere, bona ya kaha bantsedana. Eh, ba bupa, eh, suklapasoe sa ba tobaba elen kore, sitlo koe baraka nale lama laka mu onu.
The NRVP beston uit permanente afgevordigtes vani weetgevers in varteenworiger van provencies, as oke salga.
Therefore, it's important that this bill you should continue to engage. And when the NCOP comes again, then if you still want to make input, you will still have that chance.
Lo, kobo koka fe la tata, kore, reswe limpele, renzere tla kama laka mu onu ba gaetsu. Eh, kore, iraha, NCOP ewo wa hapere. Rebe rena le, chance, ya kodi tonya di tshwale zalona, mochoyone.
And this is so komit belangrik is, om betrokke te blaebe herei wezont war. When eri NRVP kom, and togses inso what i wa lewer, sal i de anele kan lewer.
With that note, we are going to request any volunteer to come and close this meeting with a prayer.
Ra batla koko pa, mongyo, akaratla koi taopa, kora, atla koto la kopani ino katapere.
Here me gan uns vesuk that eneg i man wat freiwillig for uns sal kom, di vergadering afslyt mete gebet asse blif na vore kom.
After a prayer, you should not leave. There are food that has been prepared for yourself. You have been here since ten o'clock.
Reko pa kore, mara koka tapere, loskalosa maya, lo ne fa fatse lo ba kanyi di te di jo. A salo lo nzo lele fa no kotoha kaka uraya wule somemo mosong.
I muti asse blif ni, nori gebet verla ni. Blae asse blif bei uns, and geniit merig edesomet uns. I is all fanti ni rafi so.
Can we rise and take it?
Modimwa bui kanyoho, ri kanyaha mochu wena, ochohile buraa Yesu, modina hen zalenyoram, meri lopa kasho falo, masi ho aha ri a aboning, hone modim mo warona, mo chusi mo otsika tsige. Mo enen jararale, jamorale, jamoyobu itepo. Morana le modimo akaka kobe sa, hompi je no koro, okotana mochara carona. Rele bo heti, mo bole ba kajo, le bo di mojohajo, okotana mochara carona. Ke re modimo akata ama ya, le ba na ba kajo baba dilenkuano, kota kurdirela di lo tedi siyaming. Obo sali le rona ba re sanam odimo. Ke kobe di te, sa bisama sole ma tshwono no, foko tadi koti tedi le mo di ti le morana. Otolatla saho seso kolu, obasi relate konyana, orisrelate ba rothamorena. Ke kobe kupile sa bisama sole ma tshwono no, esen kaku itse kobea ka, kamodim, ilen katekata kamorao. Yoe ilen arashela mosfa panu. Me arakola botso lo gi vosakotling, amen.
Thank you very much.